I'd like to call the September 11th, 2012 city council meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hachkis.
Here.
House.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Okay, ceremonial items, item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, every month we recognize employees who are celebrating important anniversaries with the city, and we have several this month. There aren't any here to receive their pins, but I will read their names into the record. So first with five years, Eric Yukita, who's an administrative specialist in human resources, Natasha Katzakaris, who's administrative specialist in IS, Sherry McClellan, who's PC network technician two in administrative services, Gina Bataglia, who's police officer, James Lombardo, police officer, Adam Hendel, who's supervising engineer in public works, Sarita King, administrative specialist in public works, Daniel Tacox, who's a water treatment plant operator, public works, Chris Schmitchen, who's a wastewater treatment plant operator two in public works, Jim Rumbly, code enforcement officer in Parks and Rec, Louis Casada, who's a ground maintenance worker in Parks and Rec, and Chek Williams, who's a ground maintenance worker also in Parks and Rec. With 10 years, Randall Graham, maintenance worker two, public works, Bobby Surda, who's an equipment operator in Parks and Rec. With 15 years, Lindsay Baker, administrative specialist in risk management, Simon Kiefer, project planner in community development, Ron Lickte, administrative services manager in the fire department, Joseph Avila, who is a library assistant one at the library, and Susan Jang Bardick, who's a recreation supervisor in Parks and Recreation. And then with 25 years, Yoli Gonzalez, who's an accounting assistant in public works, and Noellen Bickham, who's a library assistant one at the library.
Okay, congratulations to everyone, thank you for their work. We don't have any pins to give out today, so we'll move to item number two.
Letter of recognition to Santa Barbara Foresters for National Baseball Congress World Series Championship.
Come on up, coach, bring that big thing over here, my gosh, look at that, congratulations. Very cool. The Santa Barbara Foresters semi-pro baseball team founded in 1955 has long coveted the ultimate win and the trophy bestowed by the National Baseball Congress. And under the infectious leadership of head coach Bill Pintard for the past 18 years, the Foresters have just won their fourth National Baseball Congress World Series Championship. And the Foresters are the first team since 1993 to win the championship back-to-back, and the third team in the 78th year history of the tournament to win consecutive titles. The Foresters are comprised of college players from throughout our nation who come to Santa Barbara every summer to hone their skills under head coach and general manager Bill Pintard and his coaching staff of Gary Woods, Dan Ugo-Biitis, I hope, I just did that one terribly, but anyway, Alex Hoover, Casey Cloud, and Matt Vaika. And not to be undone by their achievements on the field, they continue their work with the Hugs for Cubs, a childhood support program for children battling cancer and other serious diseases. And part of their annual trip to Wichita is an annual visit to the Via Christi Hospital to visit the youngsters where they've been putting smiles on these kids' faces. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby recognize the Santa Barbara Foresters for realizing their dreams and for taking along the many who came before them. Thank you and congratulations. All right, great news.
There we go. Thank you.
Say a few words, go right ahead.
Madam Mayor and esteemed members of the city council, thank you very much. This trophy's gonna hang out with you today, okay? All right, and it's gonna bring you good luck today if we have any doomsayers around here. But I tell you what, we are so proud of, to represent Santa Barbara, and so proud to be called the Santa Barbara Foresters. Of all the teams throughout the nation, especially in our league, we are one of the few teams that are a community team. We don't have one person that writes a check. The whole community gets involved. And other teams are sponsored by big companies and everything else, and we're not. I do, would like to introduce a couple of my board members. The gentleman taking the pictures with the F hat, Jim Buckley, has been with us for 17, 18 years. The next gentleman's Dave Hall, former president of our board from Santa Barbara Bank and Trust, and Dan Glazer from Santa Barbara Bank and Trust to make up our board. But we have a board of directors that's made up of Santa Barbians. We are truly Santa Barbara's community team. I do want to let you know that our players come from all over the country, from Texas to Oklahoma to Florida, from Stanford, Cal Berkeley, and where do they stay? The members of our community open up their homes and let them stay at their homes, they are host families. And that is part of the program, and that is why we get good players. Doesn't have much to do with the coaching. To win, you gotta have good players, and it's the community of Santa Barbara and the support that you have given us that enables us to do so. So we are very, very proud of this achievement, we're very proud to be Santa Barbians, and I thank you very much. As my wife said during the victory celebration, everybody got up and talked about what the summer meant to everyone, and the players talked about the host families, and they talked about the Hugs for Cubs, and they obviously talked about the weather, and they talked about the beach. My wife, when she stood up, she said, "I only have one thing to say, three-peat." So we will hopefully be back here next year to give you another trophy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What, you want it up on the podium?
Put it right there on the table, it'd be great, right, so, perfect, okay. Congratulations again, three-peat sounds really nice. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment, I have two minutes here at the podium, we'll start with Scott Wentz from Cards Are Basic, and then Robert Burke.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Scott Wentz representing Cards Are Basic, you should have received in our email to you the issue that I bring before you. We're asking that you immediately put a halt to any plans to narrow State Street from Haley down to Cabrillo Boulevard, and any part of Cabrillo Boulevard, until the city has done a complete three-month summer test on this. We've asked this since the Antirata Project first came out. Staff has continued to ignore us. It takes, what, $50 worth of cones to go out there and cone off the streets, and you can see what the traffic will be. We've gone down there at certain times when there was an emergency. For instance, the very first time we saw that that street narrowed down was an emergency with the fire department, they had a tanker truck out in front of the California Hotel. The street was narrowed down to two lanes. This was not on a summer Sunday, this is just a regular day, and the traffic backed up. And this is what the people, particularly over in that West Side community, the Lederbeach community, are very, very much concerned about. So, just to cut to the chase, the last time we warned you about projects was the Granada Theater. We said, "It's being built off-center, and it's being built badly." Well, you can see how the public's accepted it, they're very angry about it, and it's been built off-center. The time before we warned you about it was the St. Francis Traffic Program. You see the traffic pattern on Garden Street and around that area is now back up to speed exactly what it was before, you have more car accidents having against the curbs, and you haven't seen any increase in pedestrian traffic in that area. I know, because I'm there every single day. So cab requests either the ex-agenda of this item for today's calendar, or placement for a vote on the next council agenda. Thank you.
Robert Burke will be followed by Kate Longstory as I, the person.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, revenge or education? Several members of the Architectural Review Board recently abstained to vote on a project because of the applicant's anti-gay policies. Some members of the city council stated that those members should be fired. The city council appointed these members, and all members of all advisory boards, to a position of trust because the members were trusted. The members who abstained acted in what they thought was the best course of action, given their position on the board and their personal positions. They did not want to act with prejudice, which is to be commended. I have appeared before a few boards when advocating a position. In one, I made my public comment, I was heard without comment from that board, which was appropriate. In another, I was interrupted, questions, statements were made, and I was cut off. They violated the Brown Act, and I left frustrated and insulted. The board I am a member of, the Rental Mediation Housing Task Force, has acted compulsively in a rush to judgment, destroying civil discourse. We all share culpability for these undemocratic behaviors. We are uneducated about what is the appropriate way to behave. These are ordinary citizens who want to contribute their time and knowledge to make a good city better. They are not trained in civil discourse, in civil discourse and what that means. I've approached a few council members that we follow the Army's example, training films. The yearly brief classroom session with the city attorney and city manager, while well-meaning, is not enough and too vague. We now have witnessed a crisis that can hopefully place as a priority, that we create training films in Robert's Rules of Orders, parliamentary procedure, the Brown Act, and other issues that the advisory committees face, and how to go about their business. I urge you to act.
Kate Longstory will be followed by Kenneth Locke, and Mr. Pennington's waiving his minutes to Ms. Longstory, so you have four minutes.
Mayor Schneider and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, today is September 11th, 2012. We are commemorating a day 11 years ago that changed the course of history. We declared a war on terror, and we entered into very costly war. But terrorists do not threaten our country as much as our government. Terrorists do not threaten our constitutional rights. It was our government that declared corporations our people, who then have bought our politicians. We are no longer a democracy, we are a corporatocracy and an oligarch. The government, not terrorists, revoked habeas corpus. The government, not the terrorists, passed NDAA, and whistleblowers, activists, protesters can be arrested for speaking out against injustice. Our government has done more to destroy our democracy and rip the shred, the fabric of our society to shreds than any terrorist or foreign threat. Next Monday, September 17th, is the one-year anniversary of Occupy Wall Street. There will be a celebration that Monday at De La Guerra Plaza, right outside your council door, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. I don't know why Dale Francisco needs to stare at the clock. I guess he's counting the time. Dale, I have 1 minute and 30 seconds left. I'd like to read the Occupy the Law Demands. This is from the state of Maryland, and it is now going across our country. "We, the people, demand judicial accountability, transparency in the administration of the courts, immediate halt to all unsigned orders. We request that the Attorney General investigate rampant legal malpractice, fraud, and backdoor deals. We demand a grand jury investigation into mortgage fraud and all other acts by the officers of the courts that stink of collusion and denial of access to the courts." I would like to read to you a book that has just come out, it's called Policing for Profit: The Abuse of Civil Asset Forfeiture. Policing for Profit: The Abuse of Civil Asset Forfeiture chronicles how state and federal laws leave innocent property owners vulnerable to forfeiture abuse and encourage law enforcement to take property to boost their budgets. The report finds that by giving law enforcement a direct financial stake in forfeiture efforts, most state and federal laws encourage policing for profit, not justice. Do you understand what that is? In the criminal forfeiture laws...
Your time's up, Ms.
Oh, okay, well...
Thank you very much.
Please Google, policing for profit, so you understand it's a scam that has been perpetrated across the United States, and especially in this county.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. That's the reason that Mr. Pennington gave me the minutes because...
Yes, but your time is up now, thank you.
He has lost his motor home, his...
Ms. Longstory, you've had four minutes beyond that, thank you. Kenneth Locke?
Howdy, my name is Kenneth Locke, I haven't been here for a while. I think the time that I haven't been here, I think this world has tailspinned a little further, deeper into, I would refer to as the abyss, a little bit, and it's becoming more apparent about what I've been talking about since I've been in this community. But since I've been back, I've been looking at the whole concept of reality. I did a sign that says "Got Real," and when it comes to reality, I think it's really important that people start to identify reality versus delusion. Reality requires there to be standards, constants, that you build upon. Now, the problem that I see, one of the problems, is this economy that we have right now, and the problem is, is it doesn't have a standard to base itself, and, which is a major problem, I'm talking major. And it doesn't allow people to actually really have a relative relationship based on the fact that there, again, there isn't a constant, a standard, which brings everything together and integrates everything. But, see, I had another sign, it says Free Reality Check, and then also I had a sign that says, "Is Your Wealth Mentally Healthy?" So the whole idea that there's some people now that have so-called wealth, I'm sorry to say, is not mentally healthy. Thank you.
Okay, we have one note here from Primo Boxing, it says, "Sorry, we can't be here working, thank you in advance to the city council." So, just that, and with that, that concludes public comment, we'll move on to the... I don't have any speaker slips, so if you need to speak, speak now, but I need you to fill out a speaker slip.
Yeah, I filled one out. Okay.
Those are all, all the speaker slips I have in front of me, why don't you state your name for the record, and you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor and city council, my name is Pete Del Bello, and I'm the founder and president of the International Chiari Association, which is a Santa Barbara-based nonprofit organization. Chiari is a serious neurological disorder, and 300,000 people have been diagnosed in the United States. In honor of September being Chiari Awareness Month, I want to invite everyone in the community to the Chiari Awareness Celebration, and I've already passed out some of these flyers that I believe you all have in front of you. And our website address is www.chiarisassociation.org, and Chiari is spelled C-H-I-A-R-I.
You're being upstaged a little bit here.
And I want to introduce you, actually, this is our mascot, Courage the Bear, he wanted to meet the mayor and the city council, and...
Welcome to City Hall.
He's, he's very popular with the kids, and of all ages, especially those with Chiari, and this free family event will be, will take place from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, September 16th, at Ealing's Park. Admission and parking are both free, there will be food, drinks, live music, arts and crafts, bouncy house, obstacle courts, booths, raffles, and of course, everybody wants to meet Courage the Bear. So it'll also be one of the locations for one of the first-ever international Chiari Walk, which will take place in 12 countries and several U.S. locations. And as mentioned, Courage the Bear will be there, he's very popular, and he's obviously the star. So, and we'll have some flyers in the back room available if anybody wants them. And I want to thank Courage for coming with me, and I thank you everyone for their time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Courage. Courage, your time is up. Okay, that now concludes public comment, if we can move to the consent calendar, and you have some items to read. Are you speaking...
Possible to speak out of order?
Only, is this on public comment, or what is this, what is this about?
Well, it's kind of a public comment.
Is it about an item on the agenda, or...
Item 29.
Okay, no, we have to do it in order, I'm sorry.
Okay, what time will that be?
It's a good question. Probably, yeah, it won't, it won't take that long, we have one item before yours, depending on the consent calendar.
One, oh, I see.
So, if you could hand in your speaker slip to Mr. Armstrong.
I already handed one in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, on to the consent calendar, thank you.
Item 5, introduction of ordinance for amendments to Municipal Code, Chapter 9.116, Civil Defense and Disaster, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 9.116 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code relating to emergency services. Item 6, introduction of ordinance approving sale of city surplus real property located at 309 West Ortega Street, including recommendation A that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving the sale of the surplus real property located at 309 West Ortega Street to Raquel Medina in the high bid amount of $400,300. Item 7, introduction of ordinance for a lease agreement with Clean Seas LLC, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a five-year lease agreement with one five-year option with Clean Seas LLC, at a monthly rent of $2,200 for approximately 1,800 square feet of water area adjacent to Marina 1F Finger in the Santa Barbara Harbor, effective October 18, 2012. Item 8, introduction of ordinance for restated lease with Signature Flight Support Corporation, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a restated lease agreement, number 12037, dated August 1, 1983, as amended, between Signature Flight Support Corporation, a California corporation, and the city of Santa Barbara encompassing approximately 938,321 square feet located at 515 Robert Marks Miller Place at the Santa Barbara Airport, for a monthly rental of $31,125 exclusive of utilities. Item 9, adoption of ordinance to approve an on-bill financing agreement for the Los Panyos Boiler Replacement Project, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the public works director to execute an on-bill financing loan agreement in the amount of $53,032.83 with Southern California Gas Company, for the acceptance of loan funds to assist in the replacement of pool heaters at the Los Panyos Del Mar Pool. Item 10, adoption of ordinance approving the sale of city surplus real property located at 20 South Milpiss Street, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving the sale of the surplus real property located at 20 South Milpiss Street to 1820 Milpiss Investors LLC, a California Limited Liability Company, in the high bid amount of $570,000. Item 20, Gilead Slough Ecosystem Management Plan Update, including recommendation B that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara authorizing the execution of grant agreement number 12009 with the State Coastal Conservancy and approving its terms and conditions. And item 25, Federal Criminal History Information for Emergency Medical Technician Certification, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara for the city of Santa Barbara Fire Department to have access to both state and federal criminal history information for the purposes of emergency medical technician licensing and/or certification.
Thank you for all that, without further objection, we'll wait for the readings. Anyone need to pull any item off? In item, I'd like to just briefly pull out item 11, which is the Primo Boxing lease agreement, just to say that I want to appreciate the various foundations coming forward and working with them, not only on the immediate funding need, but also on, hopefully, putting together a financially sustainable program, it's a very important one, and I'm glad we came to this point, and hope to see a successful future at Primo Boxing. This was, I know a lot of meetings happening, and particularly want to thank Nancy Rapp for her work with this particular lease, so I don't need to vote on that separately.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, on which item?
On item 15.
15, if you could read 15, Susan.
Increase in design and appraisal services for the Cabrillo Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kelly, the, part of this package, obviously, I've been asking about this bridge for several years, and I'm very, obviously, we're all very concerned that it, that it moved forward, it's one of our critical infrastructure projects. And my question is, has the, has Caltrans been, has the issue of separating out the Beechway Bridge been raised with Caltrans, and have they given approval to the separated Beechway proposal at this point?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, is, we have talked to Caltrans, Caltrans has said that they would, they could not fund the Beechway as part of the approved project. However, they have been supportive and have done some investigations to find grant funds to relocate it as part of transportation enhancement. However, as part of the approval of the new Transportation, Service Transportation Act, MAP 21, that has complicated the whole effort, is that programs have been deleted, programs have been moved, and so at this time, the funding has become a little bit more vague as to the possibility of getting grant funding to relocate the, the bridge. However, there is a commitment internally that, that this is a worthy project to consider because of the potential of cost savings of relocating the bridge and not having to build a temporary pedestrian bridge. So, we are recommending here to move forward with the, with the design for the, a little bit more, to move forward with this design to finish up through the grant approval, not a grant approval process, but the permit approval process, because there's still, there are still some significant items to resolve, namely, we need the Coastal Commission approval, before the Coastal Commission approval, we need historical landmarks approval, so we need to have a fully vetted, approvable, permittable project before we can get the grant. Now, our approach to this is that, let's move forward with the approved project. It takes a significant amount of time to approve the plans, bid the project, to do all the things necessary to start construction, and that we'll be working on this idea in parallel. And so there still is a chance, as long as we do these, we do the approvable project as soon as possible, and then this idea of the new Beechway, of the relocation of the Beechway would be an option that can be feasible if we... beachway would be an option that can be feasible if we get the grant funding.
Okay, so this will be an option play at this point?
And we have maybe a year to figure that out.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we've been at this for five years or longer already, so it's been a long haul and I just hope that this isn't going to get delayed further.
Exactly. We definitely have the eye on the prize, so to speak, on the approved project. And we've had a little bit of a breakthrough recently, and that's part of the appraisal services here, simplification of the process. We believe that we can move forward with the right-of-way acquisition, and this will set us up through the Caltrans process to move forward with that effort.
Okay, and I certainly would appreciate hearing about any of the, particularly with Caltrans correspondence, if you could keep me in the loop, I sure appreciate it.
Regarding the funding, yes, we will.
Thank you.
Anyone else need to pull anything off the consent calendar? Or is there a motion to approve it?
Madam Mayor.
Okay, moved and I heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that passes. Item number 28.
City Arts Advisory Committee and Community Events and Festivals Committee funding recommendations and contract with the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission for fiscal year 2013.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Sue Gray and I'm the Business Manager in the Community Development Department. Today, we're here to present the funding recommendations for the City Arts Advisory Committee, the Community Events and Festivals Committee for fiscal year 2013, and ask that you authorize the Community Development Director to execute an agreement with the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission for $427,260, which was approved in the fiscal year 13 budget. The agreement includes a little over $132,000 for the coordination and administration of the city arts programs. For many years, the city's contracted with the county to provide staffing for the City Arts Advisory Committee, the Visual Arts in Public Places, and the Events and Festivals Committees. So, this funding, the $132,000, pays for a portion of the Executive Director of the County Arts Commission, the Visual Arts in Public Places Coordinator, and a departmental analyst position. In addition to that, just under $8,000 is allocated for the development of the Downtown Cultural District, $100,000 for the Community Events and Festivals Grants, a little under $142,000 for organizational development grants, and around $45,000 for community arts grants. And today, Ginny Brush, the Executive Director of the County Arts Commission, is here to present the funding recommendations for those three funding pots.
Mayor Snyder, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this very important contract. This is our 28th year of this partnership between the county and the City of Santa Barbara. At the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning, the board approved their portion of this contract agreement, so I wanted to let you know that. This year's process, I just want to talk a little bit about the background of it. This year, we shifted the process for the first time in order to help our nonprofits keep up more with the times and also to be more efficient, is we shifted to an online grant application process. So, that took some time. I think we still have a ways to go in fine tuning that, but I think it was tremendous opportunity to help our arts organizations get more with the state of these kinds of grant applications moving forward. We provided three technical support workshops and encouraged, strongly encouraged, members to come and learn more about the process and answer any questions. We provided additional tech support that people could contact directly to have sort of online handholding, walking through the process. So, I wanted to make you aware of that. The subcommittees met in June to review the grant application processes. In all categories, we had a total of 75 grant applicants. Of those during the course of the review process, 67 total were recommended for funding. At the July 10th meeting of the Events and Festivals Committee, they reviewed grants applications as well as conducted interviews with the applicants and made their recommendations on July 10th, as the recommendations as you see them today. On July 19th, the City's Arts Advisory Committee reviewed the recommendations of their subcommittees for the community arts grants as well as the organizational development grants and also approved those unanimously. I wanted, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, sort of details as to what a general overview of the grant application requests were and with comments as to why they were funded at the level that they were. I wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of those, all of those arts organizations that we serve and work with, to thank the council for their continuing support for the arts and culture in Santa Barbara in this way. Not only do the arts and cultural organizations contribute to our quality life by offering diverse and lively programs and events throughout the community, they also encourage volunteerism and foster community engagement. I think those are very important aspects as well. But I also want to shine the light on maybe we don't do this enough to recognize the contribution that these organizations make to the local economy as well. That being said, I want to encourage you to come on Thursday, October 4th, we're having an Arts and Economic Impacts Forum where we result, we'll be releasing the results of a study done by Americans for the Arts that will give you that information as to what arts and cultural organizations and their audiences add to the Santa Barbara community and actually to Santa Barbara County. And at this point, that's going to be October 4th from 3:30 to 5:00. And at this point, I would entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Brush, thank you so much for your good work and it's delightful to read through the list and see what people are doing. I do have a question, if this is the right time, about the Downtown Cultural District. It says it's in development. Is that your staff and can you give us a short update on its status?
We do, that's a general overview of a lot of things that we do. You may see various events that happen in the Cultural Arts District, and I'm going to just mention some things like pianos on state. Staff works closely with the downtown organizations, with other nonprofits, to try to provide activities and so on in the Cultural Arts District that promote that. So, we often work with nonprofits to whether they have events downtown or so on, but we really try to use that money to promote things that happen in the Cultural Arts District. It's a very broad base of organizations that we support, but a lot, you see a lot of that activity that happens perhaps during First Thursday or other things that happen in the Cultural Arts Corridor.
I see you're getting about $8,000, though that doesn't sound like a whole lot, but I'd like to keep in touch with you on that.
It used to be 20.
Thank you.
I don't see any public comment speakers on this item. Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. House.
Just, Madam Mayor, just a final comment for me, and that is how much I appreciate the hard work that went into this from each of the organizations. Some of them didn't get, many of them didn't get all that they were asking for and some didn't get anything, but they did get good feedback. And I think that, and there was encouragement for even those to come back again and to revise their program to be able to be funded, and I think that was really a good gesture. But I just really wanted to really thank all these organizations, those who are watching and in the community as well. This is one part of their funding stream. We are hopeful that the public at large and different organizations will participate as well. The city can't do all of it, this is just a very small part. On the other hand, without it, many of these organizations really couldn't deliver these services. So, Ginny, thank you for your work and for the group that's, that reviewed this, and please accept our appreciation. And Madam Mayor, I move that we accept these recommendations.
Okay, Mr. White. Moved and seconded. Mr. White.
Well, Madam Mayor, I just, I look at this list and then I look, I think back to the sort of the CDBG, Human Services, efforts that are made with a slightly larger amount of money, but in both cases, you have our citizens stepping up and slogging their way through lists of proposals and organizations putting themselves on the line to solicit the funds, and it's not an easy process in these tough times, never is an easy process, but it's a vetting, it's a public vetting, it's really a heartening pair of processes that occur for the human services and for the arts. And I am grateful and proud to be part of the support system for this effort. And I hope that you'll pass back to your committees that do a lot of so much work that at least, I'm sure all of us feel that, we're grateful for their work.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Brush, is the chromatic gate outside this budget?
Absolutely.
And where does it?
May I come, Mayor Snyder and Councilmember Hotchkiss, if I can make a little aside here and just mention that the Arts Commission was able to raise $79,000 in totally private funding to support the restoration project, and I won't go into all of the levels of community involvement and support in reaching that goal, but that, again, we are very happy to have achieved that total, I think in July, early August, and we are now moving forward with the process of getting bids and working with getting permits and so on to move forward with that.
Can you give me an idea of the timeline you expect?
I can't. We're working with city staff in terms of permitting and how long that process takes. Again, we have private funds, we want to be very careful of how those are spent. They're, well, you know, hard fought-for funds, so we want to make the most of them. So, we, I would hope that it would be done, I mean, if I had any control over it, I would like it done by the end of October, but we have to go with the process.
When you say done, I mean, all the planning, it's not the gate itself won't be done by the end of October. Really, F.A.R.?
I don't want to go on the record as saying that, but we are trying to move forward as judiciously as possible following all of the rules we need to in terms of contracts, permits, and so on, but it is on our agenda. We are hoping that once the process starts, that process itself will take like five to seven weeks.
Great, thank you.
That'll be exciting to see. I also want to thank the members of the various committees who read all the applications and had to make those decisions. That's hard when you don't have as much money as the ask, and that happens with our Human Services Committee and certainly with this one as well. So, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number 29.
Appeal of Architectural Board of Review Approval of 901 Olive Street.
Okay, this is an appeal, so the way this works, just as a reminder, we'll get a staff report about the project, and then the appellant will have half an hour, up to 30 minutes, to state his or her case, and then the applicant will have up to 30 minutes, and then we go to public comment, and then it comes to the council. Of course, if council has questions, any parts of those, that's fine as well. But we need some staff people here to start the project, so... Hold that thought. Okay, I think we need to take a very short recess so the staff can get here and get set up. So, we'll take a very short recess. We've already read the item. It's item number 29, and we'll start with staff.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Tony Bowman, staff to the Architectural Board of Review, will give our report.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. This item is an appeal of the Architectural Board of Review's project design approval of 901 Olive Street. The project is located at the corner of Olive Street and East Cannon Perdito in the Laguna Neighborhood. The zoning designation for this block is C2 General Commercial. The general plan designation is Commercial Medium High Density Residential. I'll quickly go through the project description, and the applicant may have more detail to add later. Proposed are 10 one-story studio apartment units and nine two-story one-bedroom apartment units above a new two-level, 59-space parking structure attached to the existing two-story 18,276-square-foot, two-story commercial building. The project also includes alterations to the existing building, including facade improvements on all sides, new elevator, new roof, mechanical equipment, light wells, solar panels, and a new 474-square-foot first-floor level mechanical room. So, the building would be attached right here, so it's actually one attached building. Total development on the site would be 60,060 square feet with a maximum height of 51 feet and four stories on the 33,005-square-foot lot. Seven existing parking spaces will remain at surface level here on the west side for a total of 66 proposed parking spaces. The addition, all this building mass over here, would be located in the low-lying existing surface parking lot adjoining the existing commercial building. A north arrow is shown on this plan, but we will refer to Olive Street as the east side, Cannon Perdito as the south side, et cetera. On the first floor, this area of the city is topographically interesting because it has some hills. The site, this site in particular, has about a one-story grade differential from its western property boundary down here, up to the level of Olive Street to the east, and also the northern property boundary is considerably higher than the existing parking lot. The hatched area on this plan, you know, you could see some landscaping around here where this is all hatched, shows how the first-floor level is below grade. The existing commercial building has a partial first floor and seven carport spaces to remain on grade. The lower level of the proposed parking structure, this area, is at grade level on the west side, and vehicles would enter and exit as they currently do using the existing access easement from East Cannon Perdito. Cars currently come in and out here and they would continue to do so coming into this lower parking level. Moving up to the second floor, we have the main office floor of the existing commercial building and the upper parking level of the new structure. Accessibility to this level of parking would be from a new driveway entrance off of Olive Street, right here. There's no ramp, you know, cars can't go from one parking level to the other. All the cars on the second floor would come in the new entrance from Olive Street. And this plan shows landscaping on all sides, pretty generous setbacks provided by the project. And of note is that the proposed structure on the north corner leaves space to retain the existing large fig tree, and this was much appreciated by the ABR, where this building all the way down to the foundation was notched out to leave room for that existing large fig tree. At the third floor level, now we're looking at the roof of the existing building because it's only two stories tall. The existing building would be enhanced with new mechanical equipment and screening, addition of light wells and solar panels, and this plan, the floor plan for the new addition, shows nine studio units and a central courtyard. Studio unit sizes range from 862 to 880 net square feet. This floor level of the units is slightly lower than the existing commercial roof. Private outdoor living space for the units is provided on balconies. At the fourth floor level, this consists of one studio unit here and nine one-bedroom units. The one-bedroom units each have a mezzanine level accessed by a spiral stair. We can see the little spiral stairs at each of the floor plans. The one-bedroom unit sizes range from 1,046 to 1,081 net square feet. The central courtyard has perimeter walkways with the center open to the level below to allow lights and... allow lights and air to get down to that level below. A common outdoor amenity space at the area of the building connection in this area will afford views to the south. Again, private outdoor living space for the units is provided on balconies. This floor level is approximately 34 feet above the grade here on the west side where the existing parking lot entry is, and roughly 20 feet above the Olive Street sidewalk. And then we have the mezzanine level. The one-bedroom units all have this mezzanine level. A mezzanine is an intermediate floor within a story or room. The mezzanine is counted as floor area, but when it occupies less than one-third of the floor area of the room, it does not count as a story. The maximum building height to the mezzanine roofs is approximately 51 feet, and this maximum height occurs toward the center of the building. The C2 zone is limited to a maximum building height of 60 feet and a maximum of four stories. General plan consistency. We had a question yesterday at the site visit about this project's consistency with the general plan. The land use designation here is commercial slash medium-high residential. The project density is based on current zoning ordinance for variable density and calculates out to 25 dwelling units per acre. In the proposed future average unit size density incentive program, the density based on the unit size proposed here would allow 23 dwelling units per acre for this project. Relevant land use element policies include land use growth management, four principles for development, number five, community benefit housing, six, location of growth, 12, community character, 12.3, strategy to provide setbacks to protect significant trees, which this project does.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wouldn't there be a different density under Plan Santa Barbara if there were rental units?
Madam Chair and Councilmember White, this area of the city in the general plan is designated commercial, medium-high residential. It is not within an overlay area for higher-density incentives, so it would, the proposal would follow the new basic incentive program.
Okay, so with the main appeal issue today being neighborhood compatibility, we've provided photographs of the existing site, and we'll juxtapose those with renderings of the proposed project. This view is of the existing building from the corner of East Cannon Perdito and Olive Street. You can see it's a one-story facade on Olive Street. If we were looking at the other side, it would appear to be two stories from the west. It's a mid-century modern building built in 1960. And now the architect's rendering of this proposed project would do facade enhancements all the way around to kind of update and improve the appearance of the building. And then kind of in the back, you can see the proposed residential units, those upper floors of the residences. An existing view from East Cannon Perdito Street, and then we see a rendering of the proposal. And again, we keep the same driveway entrance, cars entering and exiting that lower level of parking as they do today. The project adds a trellis here trained with trumpet vines and some landscaping improvements and a row of palm trees in the sidewalk along East Cannon Perdito. Now, an existing photograph from the northern corner of the property on Olive Street, looking back down toward Cannon Perdito and the intersection down there, we see the existing one-story facade of the existing commercial building. And you can't really see it through the shrubbery, but the parking lot is, the existing parking lot level is probably about 15 feet lower than the sidewalk, so it's considerably lower. And this is the large fig tree that's proposed to remain at that corner. And compare that to the rendering of the proposed project. This shows all the olive trees along Olive Street and the fig tree. And then this rendering better shows the project by having the tree shown semi-transparent. The top of the second-floor units, this area here, I believe the architect refers to this feature as a cowl around this facade. The top of this is roughly 30 feet above the Olive Street sidewalk. And then the upper roof, including the mezzanine level, this edge facing Olive Street is roughly 38 feet above the sidewalk. And the applicant can correct me if I'm not accurate on those figures. And with this rendering, you can also see a car, it looks like a little white Prius or something, exiting the new proposed driveway, coming out of the upper level of parking. All right, for the project history, the project was first reviewed on March 5th by the ABR, and the ABR gave general comments to provide a neighborhood photo survey, reduce plate heights, study massing and materials for neighborhood compatibility, study the architectural treatment of the existing building, particularly the proposed corrugated and perforated metal screening, and to maximize landscaping areas. The board was supportive of the overall site planning and the concept of a mixed-use project with modest-sized residences, and commented that the parking modification posed no aesthetic impact. At the second concept review on March 19th, the ABR was generally comfortable with the overall massing and architectural style, requested reductions in height, and asked for further study of the metal screening. The project was continued to the staff hearing officer for a review of the requested parking modification. And regarding the parking modification, the existing office building...
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor? How much was the height reduced? Do you recall? It's at 31 feet now. Do you recall what it was originally?
I really don't. I think the applicant could probably tell. It was like incremental reductions from meeting to meeting, and I don't remember those figures.
All right, maybe somebody on that side can give me the answer later. Thank you.
So after that, the project went to the staff hearing officer to discuss a parking modification. The existing office building has 46 parking spaces and is non-conforming with 22 fewer than the required 68 spaces. A zoning modification was approved on May 16th for the proposed mixed-use building to provide 66 spaces, which is 18 fewer than the total required for the residences and commercial space. A parking demand study was prepared, which supported the modification request. Approval of the parking modification was not appealed. So basically, the parking modification allowed the retention of the non-conforming parking. Okay, the project, after going to the staff hearing officer, the project...
Hold on, Mr. Ross has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Long, while you're on the parking situation, I was reading the letter from Mr. Ward regarding the Sholley property, the adjacent property to you, regarding the parking modification, the calculations therein, but it also mentions egress as being a problem as well. Can you address that?
Ah...
It was a letter written to you back in March regarding...
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Ross, yes, that letter came in early in the review of the project, and the applicant since met and explained to the neighbor the site plan and the circulation. There was confusion as to whether or not the driveway access off Cannon Perdito was going to be used fully as in and out, so there was some confusion. He thought that the project would have to circulate through a remainder portion of his property. Tony, if you can go back to the site plan. It was clarified, and that is not a technical problem. I know his letter makes it sound like there's a legal issue, but they did resolve that. So on bottom of the screen, this property has proper legal access in and out in the driveway, so that is no longer the issue.
And that was part of the traffic and circulation analysis for the parking?
Actually, it was just the project proposed explained properly to the neighbor was all that was needed.
Okay, so the project returned to the ABR on May 29th for project design approval. The ABR expressed concerns about the compatibility of the metal siding materials and asked that they be reduced or removed. While generally satisfied with the building's architectural style, proportion, and scale, height, and the project's preservation and protection of trees, the ABR did not grant an approval at this meeting. They asked for further study of the compatibility of the metal siding and suggested use of more traditional materials such as masonry or wood to better blend in with the surrounding neighborhood, and voted to continue the item for two weeks. The project returned two weeks later, on June 11th, with revisions eliminating all of the controversial corrugated metal siding. The exterior materials were proposed to be a variety of metal, masonry, and cementitious siding, painted various earth-tone colors along with sandstone and a trellis trained with trumpet vines. The ABR found the project to be well-designed and articulated, appreciated the continual reductions in height, the generous amount of landscaping afforded by the setbacks, and granted project design approval with the project compatibility analysis findings. The approval carried with it a list of conditions to further ensure neighborhood compatibility, such as further enhancement of natural and traditional-looking materials to blend into the neighborhood. At the meetings, the ABR heard public testimony and received written correspondence in opposition and in support of the project. Worthy of note is that there were no votes in opposition to the project at any meeting. And on June 21st, an appeal was filed by Grant Castleberg. Mr. Castleberg is concerned that the proposed project does not blend in with the neighborhood and its mostly small craftsmen and Spanish-style houses, that it proposes a modern style in close proximity to El Pueblo Viejo, and that the project will detract from the ambiance of the neighborhood and lower property values. He would be in favor of a project that fits into the feeling of the neighborhood and complies with city guidelines. So on the issue of neighborhood compatibility, the ABR reviewed the project four times, and the applicant was responsive each time to their comments. Metal exterior components were changed to more traditional materials, height was lowered, colors have been and will be toned down to more of an earth-tone palette. The immediate area of the project does not have a prevailing architectural style, particularly within the block and at the intersection of Olive and East Cannon Perdito Streets. The applicant did not propose, and the ABR did not suggest, changing the architectural style of the existing building. We have some slides of that intersection. Here we see the proposed project on the south side, or let's see, that would be the northwest corner. This project, 902 Olive Street, built in 1982, is at the northeast corner, and it's considered to be a contemporary style with a stucco finish. This would be the southeast corner of the intersection, 502 East Cannon Perdito. This one, we have survey records in our archives, and they call this one a contemporary-style building with stucco finish. And then across Cannon Perdito from the project site, this is 833 Olive Street. This would be the southwest corner, built in 1974. Our historic surveys call this also a contemporary-style building. We have some additional photographs of examples of contemporary architecture in the immediate neighborhood. The ABR considered the variety of styles present when finding the project to be compatible with the neighborhood. This is the adjacent modern-style building to the west, the State of California Office Building, built in 1958. This building is adjacent to El Pueblo Viejo, and we see the project, the existing commercial building at the project site in the background here. This building, 923 Olive Street, is an adjacent contemporary-style building, built in 1978. And yesterday at the site visit, we had a request from Councilmember House to better illustrate the project's compatibility and relationship to this neighboring building. And I believe the applicant will be providing an exhibit in his presentation to show that. 420 East Carrillo Street is a contemporary-style building built in 1977. It's located around the corner from the project site to the north, and its rear property line adjoins the project site. In the background, just visible above the roof line of this building are the palm trees. These are the palms that are on the project site. And across the street from 420 is a relatively new contemporary-style, single-family residence, also adjacent to El Pueblo Viejo. It was approved by the Single Family Design Board and constructed in 2011. So those are some examples of modern architecture in the immediate vicinity. The proposal complies with the ABR guidelines, as the ABR found in their project compatibility analysis, which is one of your attachments to the CAR. And the proposed addition is compatible with the existing building. Another appeal issue mentioned was compatibility with the El Pueblo Viejo district, but this project site is not within or adjacent to EPV, and the transition in architectural styles exists to the west at that State of California building. The project's proximity to El Pueblo Viejo is what we consider a transitional area in the city's guidelines. And this means that when a project is within close proximity to a landmark or historic district, consideration may be given to that district's guidelines. In these areas, project design should promote a smooth transition from one usage area or architectural style to the next. The Blood Bank Building at the corner of Laguna Street and East Cannon Perdito, built in 1953, is in El Pueblo Viejo and is identified as being a modern Spanish style. The State of California Building next door to it is adjacent to EPV and is mid-century modern style, built in 1958, which preceded the establishment of the El Pueblo Viejo by two years. And this slide shows that this corner building is the Blood Bank Building at the corner of Laguna and East Cannon Perdito, and then right next to it is the State of California Building. So that property line between those two buildings is the actual EPV boundary, and this is another view looking toward Laguna Street. So there was really no opportunity for this project to make that quote-unquote "smooth transition of architectural styles" since we had that intervening building with a rather abrupt architectural style transition that already existed. Attachment eight to your council agenda report is this map showing the project's locational relationship to El Pueblo Viejo and examples of other modern architecture indicated in orange. Yesterday, we had questions about specifically which landmarks are shown by the green dots, so I labeled those on this map. And I've also added the Lower Riviera Special Design District, also called the Bungalow District, so you can see the project's proximity to that design district. Of course, one could look at this map in another way and see lots of gray area indicating a lack of contemporary architecture, but the map does show a concentration of compatible modern architecture near and adjacent to the project site in this area. And the remaining slides are photographs of modern architecture examples that were shown in that... in that, shown in orange on that map. All of these examples are in the Laguna neighborhood. This is 1025 Olive Street, 624 Olive Street, 606 Olive Street, 817 East de la Guerra, 531 East Cota, 625 North Salzapuentes, 534 East Ortega Street, and 635 Olive Street. There's a proposal that's currently in front of the ABR. They reviewed it a third time just this past Monday. So that'll be another mixed-use, modern-style building in the Laguna neighborhood. So our recommendation, the ABR reviewed the project four times and heard the public comments at each meeting. The project was felt to be a fine example of its architectural style and an enhancement to the neighborhood. Staff recommends that council uphold the ABR's project design approval with their conditions of approval and deny the appeal. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
And I also have additional slides of elevations and section drawings if needed for reference.
Thank you. First, any questions from council for staff? Mr. House?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. One of your very first slides, you mentioned, and it was the ease, an easement, right behind where Rape Crisis Center is right now, that entrance behind the existing building. But there was a letter in our packet that actually seemed to challenge that as a legal easement for this property, and maybe I misread it. Can you address that, one of you, please, because I think that needs to be established as a legitimate access?
Yes, Councilmember House, I think it would probably be best to hear it from the property owners' representatives, but as it has been explained to me by them, that it was just a matter of confusion on that they weren't properly reading the site plan, the neighbor, and that the access that they proposed to continue to use has not been questioned. There was a concern that the arrows on that driveway were only showing in, and so he was questioning how they were going to get out of the lower-level garage. But now that they've clarified that that driveway is for both to continue to use it as they have, in and out, without having to circulate through other parts of his property, then it's, the issue's been resolved.
Okay, thank you.
That's how it's been explained to me from the applicant, and you could hear it directly from that as well.
If they make their presentation, they could address that if not.
Thanks.
Okay, and then one more question. Just, this is actually not to this exact property, but to the parking lot that serves the state, the building built by the state. That would almost seem to me to be a land bank of some sort, I mean, in the sense that that's a big, flat parking lot that has some development potential for the future. Is that, I mean, it really has nothing to do with this applicant, but I'm just curious as to what its possibility is for future development, or is that just somehow needed to be forever a flat parking lot?
My understanding is that that property could be improved. The question would be, would it be improved for a state governmental purpose, or would the property transition into private property and seek building permits from the city? It has the same zoning and general plan designation as the project site.
Oh, thank you. That helps me. And it is owned by the state right now. If they were to divest it or something, that would be where it would get into, say, private hands.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from, we do have a few ABR members here, Mr. Zink or whoever would like to come up, if you'd like to come up at this point and make any comments, now's the time.
Thank you. Paul Zink, ABR member. I want to make three points to you. The first one is that this discussion that we had with ABR was unanimous. We all had comments, we all had concerns, and at the end of the, at the end of the reviews, we all agreed with this project. Dawn Sherry, the chair, had to step away at the last meeting, and so she didn't vote, but prior to her leaving, we asked her, "Do you support this project?", and she said yes. And that's important to understand. The second point that I want to make is that I don't own the land, and I'm not the architect, so I don't really get to dictate what that building's going to look like. And you folks don't own the land either, and if you happen to have owned it, you might have designed a different building. When we're on ABR, we have to review what is in front of us and what is appropriate for the community. And that's really tough when you have your own ideas as a designer versus what is in front of you, and that's what we have to evaluate. And when we all looked at this project, this is what the applicant wants, this is how they want to promote for the, for their site, for these reasons, and at times, there was concerns about the height. And yes, we did sandwich the building. We took square inches out of height, and they made the parking lot smaller and all the different things, so the building did get smaller. We were relentless on asking them to change the building materials, because from my perspective, what makes our town work is the natural building materials that makes our buildings. And then when you have a sleek, modern, smooth building material that's on the outside, it kind of doesn't fit in this town. And that's my perspective, and that's what I bring as an ABR member, and that's what I really held on to. I said, "From my perspective, the building needs to have more of these forms that we're used to seeing." Now, modern architecture, contemporary architecture, at the end of the day, the building has to belong to the community. It's a quilt that we have here, and the quilt is made up, stitched together with roads and with landscaping. Some of our, we have some really neat contemporary buildings, but they really don't stick out like, "Hi, I'm cladded with metal, and take a look at me." But my favorite one is Cutter Motors, which is now the Santa Barbara Auto Group. If you take a look at that building, it is not a traditional Santa Barbara Spanish building, but it's got the forms, and it fits, and it's really interesting. Another one is the Hayward Design Center, which is just, we saw a picture of it on Olive Street, where you've got a building that just sits there, but it has interesting building materials, and it fits into our community. And I would say, I feel this building that's being proposed will belong to the site and will fit in with the neighborhood. The last thing is kind of the context, and we do study the context of buildings across the street, next door, and across the other street. And I want to point out three views that are important to this project. Now, when you study a building and landscaping, we don't say landscaping hides ugly buildings, because landscaping might not be there. And so we're always looking at the building as if there is no landscaping. But in reality, there is landscaping, and the landscaping is going to be maintained, and it's being preserved. That is a bonus. So when you're on Olive Street, Upper Olive Street, going down towards the ocean, you've got the red brick building with the arches covered with ivy, and it's set back from the road, and you've got that ficus tree, and you have to say, "Will this building really be noticeable?" It'll be very insignificantly noticeable because of the way that ficus tree is that's being saved, the building is being notched around it. If you're on Lower Olive, looking up, you have, basically, it's a one-story old city or state building that's being preserved, being maintained, then you have a row of olive trees, and this project's being stuck behind it. It's an infill project. It has minimal impact to Olive Street, to the neighborhood. The impact is really going to be from Cannon Perdido Street, where you were, the site goes down, and you're basically on the lower part, and you're looking up, and you say, "Oh, my goodness, look at that." You have to realize how deep the site is, and it's behind an existing building. These are things that we take into account when we review the project. And what's really cool nowadays is we have these computer 3D models, so there's no real cheating going on when you build the model and you throw a tree in front of it, and you say, "Now, you can't see these corners." We look at the massing. We're looking at the massing from these perspectives, and we say, "This is a great infill site. It's a building that's being fit into there." And we support the building, and we're working on the building materials. There's great articulation that's happening in there, the forms are wonderful. So the board is behind this building, and that's what I'm here to say.
Thank you. Any questions? Yep, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here, Mr. Zink. I have a question on your last, at the last meeting. Both you and Mr. Mosel had some fairly significant questions still about building materials. And I was wondering, given some of the suggestions that both of you gave to the applicant, why did you feel that it was, it was good to go ahead with project design approval on that date rather than asking them to come back with those changes?
One of the things, I was misreading the plan. I was reading this one building material, and I thought it was going to be metal siding that was on the wall, and it turned out it was going to be the cementitious board, it's a Hardybacker board, and it was going to be painted, so it looks like a wood siding. So I read that wrong, so that was fine. The other issue that I'm having mild concern with was the extra bulk that's being added with these sun shades. And if you're out there in the afternoon, it's western sun, and it just beats on those windows, and we're trying to get lead-rated buildings, and so that's one of the things we try to do, is block that sun. On the west, the south is less important, and by adding these sun shades to the corner, which is right above the Rape Crisis Center, we're adding bulk, we're adding mass, and it's just like, can we not do that? Architect really likes that. At some point, maybe the owner really likes it. You have to let go of a couple of things, and so that siding, that sun shade has always been not my favorite, but I'm not the designer, once again. The applicant did come back with putting trumpet vine on it, so we have the color. He gets the sun protection, because the sun is relentless on those western windows. And so at the end of the day, I feel the project is moving forward. We do want them to come back with some more building materials, but we're not talking about changing the form, lowering the height, get rid of a unit, those types of issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. House?
You may have just answered my question, but I want to really be sure. So at the subsequent meeting after today, so what is, what's the, what's the scope of the kinds of things that you're working with the applicant on?
Get some additional information about where the building materials are going to be and how they're going to be attached, and encourage him to bring more natural, not really raw, but less finished material to the street face that we see and that we can touch.
And again, you're not talking about changing the program, you're talking about changing the aesthetics and these...
Once the parking was blessed, then the parking dictated the number of units, and those kinds of things were out of our hands, and we're now looking at the articulation, which we are very fine with, the form of the building, we're fine with. It was just how it was being cladded with this punched metal material, and it's like, for Santa Barbara, that was a little too much.
Thanks, Mr. Zink.
And one more from Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Zink. At some point, people have been saying, "Well, it would be more consistent to have a Spanish building there, a Spanish-influenced building." But honestly, I don't see how you make a mid-century modern building a Spanish building. Can you speak to that?
I'm sure there's 15 architects in town who could do that, and there's 15 architects that are happy with the contemporary form that's there. It is possible, it is feasible. It's not our job to tell him that this is EPV and that you have to do this. Our job is to say, "You need to build a building and, and make it fit with the neighborhood, belong in the neighborhood." The neighborhood has great examples of the Spanish architecture, but it also's got some really weird 1980s apartment houses that really are nondescript, that one day will get maybe flattened, and something else will get put in its place. So there's a lot of flexibility, there's a very wide, gray, acceptable range of what building can go there. So, but you can make that one into a Spanish-y building if you want to. Let me take a look at the Pepper Tree Inn, they did a great job, but that was that client's program, that client's desire, and that's what was built for the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Zink. Okay. Mr. Sooding, did you want to speak on behalf of ABR, or no?
On behalf of HLC.
I mean, HLC, sorry. Never mind, I got my, never mind. Okay, we'll move on to the appellant, Mr. Castleberg, you have Castleberg. Gosh, I'm not speaking well today. You have up to 30 minutes, and I don't think you have a clock there. I'll let you know when you're down to 10.
Okay. Thank you. Is this on?
Make sure the green light is on.
It is. Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Grant Castleberg, and, let's see, can we get this on there? It's coming. And I file this appeal because I felt that the project was not in keeping with most of the buildings in the neighborhood due to the style and also the size, bulk, and scale. There are mostly one- and two-story buildings. They're set back from the street more than this project is proposed to be. And I have some pictures of, when it comes up...
I'll stop the clock until you can get that up. City TV's coming up, so I'll just stop the clock for a minute.
Well, it's this one. That's what I was trying earlier.
Maybe if you just restart your laptop.
Hmm? What?
Could you restart the laptop?
Restart?
Yeah, just exit.
Hmm?
Exit your...
Oh.
He's in the right, preset three, right?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe it's the computer.
Yeah, do you have, do you know how to turn your external display on? It's usually function... I don't know which one it is on this machine. Is it function F7?
Yeah, it needs to...
Function F7?
Oh, there it is. That should do it.
There you go.
There we go, thank you. Okay.
I'll start the clock again.
Okay. This is on the west side of Olive Street, 1007 Olive. Simple, traditional building. 1001 Olive. 430 East Carrillo. My wife and I own this property. It's, you can see, a craftsman-style house. My office is in it. And this next door to it, just below. And this, the brick building that was referred to before. It's well-set back, and it has courtyards, it's covered with vines and trees, so it's very much recedes into the background. Another view of it. And this is where the new building's proposed, the Morton Bay Fig, and the palms behind it. And actually, I have a question for Mr. Sooding. Are all the pines going to be relocated and reused?
You really need to address us, Mr. Castleberg. You can, you can bring questions up, and that can be answered, but really need to address us.
That's a question that I have. And this is 901 State, 901 Olive Street, which to me has been a very unattractive building. And the comment was made at ABR that they, and the new structure, they wanted to emulate this. Well, I don't see emulating something that's unattractive, I see improving the neighborhood. And these are buildings on the east side of Olive Street. And you can see the character of them. They're all one-story. That's a fairly new building. It's three condominium units. I think it's very nicely done, very nicely articulated. Cannon Perdido Street, the 901 Olive Street. And this is actually on Carrillo Street, the Bodakor Building that was referred to, which I think is a very well-designed contemporary building. And this is the back of the Bodakor Building, which fronts on Carrillo Street. And you can see, it's, it's very well-soffined by the trees, some of which are on the project And this is the State of California Building, which to me is another very unattractive building. And here, the buildings as approved are inappropriate to the neighborhood because of the mass and style, and I feel they're out of keeping with the style of buildings on Olive Street, and the structure's too massive, you know? Think Chapala Street, where there are tall buildings right close to the street. This is only 14 feet from the street. The new building is close to the sidewalk on Olive Street with little modulation. If there were setbacks, some of the palms could remain in place, and it would be more interesting. The design could set and attract, this design... Excuse me, an experience with this. And these are some pictures that Don Sharp got of samples of remodels in the more Hispanic style. This, the ice patch on Cliff Drive as it was and as it is now. So it's quite possible. And this sacks Fifth Avenue building today and the original Crocker Bank. Chordanos. And the building that's replaced it today. So it's quite possible. It has been done and done very well. And this is just a sketch, but 418 East Cannon Perdito Street. And what's there today? And this shows the, while the same plan that was shown before by Tony of the, in orange, the contemporary buildings in the area. And this is one at 411 East Carrillo Street. And to my wife thinking, it's a contemporary building. It's sort of contemporary Eastern Mediterranean. And I think something like this, 901 Olive Street, could be transformed into something like this very easily. And then the other buildings, and this is another one by Irving Gill, the same architect, the other buildings could go a little more Hispanic. Or wanting to keep it contemporary, to me, this is a better solution. So I'm open for questions. I think that's all of my presentation.
Thank you. You still have for later, if you wish. 21 minutes left, so... Any questions at this point? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Hi, Mr. Castleburg. Thank you. Can I... Is it fair to say that you pretty much hate mid-century modern architecture?
Well, I'm trying to think of some...
I don't think there's a yes or no. You know, it's not guilty or not.
No. I look at the '50s, '60s, and '70s as poor examples of architecture in general. I know there are some nice things in there, but most of what you see isn't...
I understand. And I very much felt the way you did until recently, I would have to say. I don't necessarily have a transformation, but I did have a chance to go down to Palm Springs, and they have really rejuvenated that era, to my surprise. But I wanted to know really what you were thinking.
Yeah. I like the way Pearl Chase reorganized Santa Barbara after the 25 earthquake. We have floods of tourists come up here because it's such a beautiful city, and I would hate to see us get away from that into something that is more like LA.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Castleburg, and of course, you are a professional, a long-term professional in the private development and project business, and so you're well aware of the costs and the pain of undergoing the process. You participated in the early hearings in the, for example, you were at the staff hearing officer meeting on the parking mod, were you not?
For what?
For the... When the staff hearing officer heard about the... Had a hearing about the parking? Were you at... Weren't you at that hearing?
Probably. I don't remember. When was that?
Was it in June? May? May? Well, I just... I'm curious as to were your concerns... Were you concerned at that point about the building? And were you... How... Did you have any thoughts about its being viable or having the concerns that you're feeling today?
Yeah. Well, because we own property just a block away, less than a block away, I was noticed and read that. My wife looked at it and saw it had perforated metal, and she said, "Grant, you got to go down there. It's awful." So I did. It was June 11th, I think, the first time I went.
Uh-huh.
And yeah. And I also have a concern about the reduction in parking, because if you drive around that area regularly, you'll notice that residents fill up the spaces on the street with their all-day parking. There's no place else for people in the building to park.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Actually, I'm looking at the staff hearing officer minutes from May 16th and the minutes state that you were there and spoke, Mr. Castleburg. So is that an error?
Oh, okay.
No? Okay. Just want to be clear to answer the question. And that's when the modification, the parking mod, was approved.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move to the applicant. And again, you have up to 30 minutes. If you can state your name for the record, that would be great when you're ready to go. Sure.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Kirkhardt, and principal of Design &amp; Architecture at San Barbara, and practicing for over 35 years. When Peter first brought this project to us and introduced it to us, we were very excited about the opportunity to create an addition to this modern building. It's actually a building that we think is quite nice, and we are... Obviously, not... Everyone doesn't agree with that. But in any case, I think the staff did a great job of completely outlining all the issues in terms of policy and guidelines and so forth. So I'm not going to reiterate that. What I'd like to do is just do a very brief presentation to cover basically the idea of neighborhood compatibility, our modern design approach, and the proximity to El Pueblo Viejo. After I speak, our landscape architect is going to come up and do a brief presentation as well as the owner. So we're all familiar with the project site by now. And the line for El Pueblo Viejo that runs through it. So there's our site on the corner. Very important to note that it's... We're in the commercial zone where all the surrounding area that was shown by Mr. Castleburg, it is primarily single-family. It is an R3, R4 transitional zone that there have been a number of projects increasing the density there. So here's the existing condition. We can go fairly quickly through these. We've all looked at these today. I think everyone would agree that it's a fairly nondescript box of a building, screaming for improvements, in our opinion. This is the... That previous one is what we call the south exposure, and these windows here, besides the west exposure, also get baked by the sun in the afternoon. Proximity to the state building, which is to the west. And here, I think this is important to note, you can really see, it's actually about a 17-foot-deep hole that was excavated in there at the time that this building was built in 1964. Had the grade been... Had that building not been built in the grade, at the existing grade, there would have been a tremendous amount of excavation that would have to happen in order to create this project. So one of the things that we saw as the opportunity was, in terms of where the city is headed and building over parking lots, of any parking lot in town, this is certainly one that would be high on the list. It's a hole in the ground, ready-made to build covered parking. So it just really seemed to really lend itself to the project that our client had in mind. This is my favorite slide. It actually kind of looks like a mobile home, in my opinion, here. It's a terrible view of that building, and we're going to do major enhancements to that. That is actually the side that faces the parking lot. And one of the other real problems with this building is that it has no ADA, direct ADA access from the parking lot. So right now, people that park down here pretty much have to walk all the way around the building to come up to the corner to get in, or there's a ramp here, but it's... The problem is, the ramp also has steps in it. So it's really not an ADA access. So one of the other things that we're solving with this addition is to create a new lobby on this end of the building with vertical circulation, including elevators. That elevator will be multiple-use. It'll be used, served by the residents, as well as allowing ADA accessibility into the building itself. This is a... Yeah, this view we wanted to show, too. There's all the mechanical equipment that's up on this roof is presently available for viewing. It's especially obvious when you're up on Olive Street, heading down towards the ocean, heading south on Olive. You can see the rooftop of that building very clearly with all the rooftop equipment and vents and various things. So part of our proposal is to improve that and do an equipment screen to hide all that, which will be a big improvement to the neighborhood. Just to get to the site context, one of the things is that this block is literally filled with mid-century modern or modern design examples. Two mid-century moderns, others in the kind of the '70s that were outlined in photos that were shown earlier, which we'll go through now. So this is the shaded area, represents our building, end site. This is the State of California building with its parking. Building off of East Carrillo Street, 420. This was actually done by Chuck Schmant back in the late '70s. It was his office originally when it was built. And then the building directly adjacent to us, this brick that's covered with vines. Altogether, the sum of those blue areas equal little over 60% of that block in terms of land area. If you take out the portion that is set aside for El Pueblo Viejo, it's nearing 80% of the block is covered with examples of modern architecture. So when we approached this, it's almost like if there was going to be a modernist zone in Santa Barbara, like the bungalow area, this would be an area where it could be conceived to be done, because there actually are people that appreciate this kind of architecture. This overview really shows it, because it really shows all of the buildings in one photo. So this is from a vantage point across the street. Here's our building at Olive with the parking lot. This is the adjacent building going up Olive Street. Here's the Carrillo. You can see these are actually up on quite a cut here. So these things get up very high from this backside and as well as the state building. We've gone through this. I'm not going to belabor the dates. We essentially went through four ABR reviews, and I think Paul Zink stated it fairly succinctly. Every time we made movement, every time we appreciated their comments, and we came back making changes. And eventually, we eliminated all the materials that everybody was having a problem with by the third meeting and went back with a palette of much more Santa Barbara-inspired natural stones, trellises with planting on it and so forth, and really tried to address their concerns. And I think we're very happy with the outcome of the project now. And I think we didn't really hear any outcry, public outcry, at the ABR meetings until the third meeting. At the show hearing, Mr. Castleburg was there, and he just wanted to... From what my recollection is, he was just there to kind of see what was going on with our project. Never really stated anything concerning the style of the architecture. And in working with the ABR, there was never any concern. Our owner, our client, likes this building, and we are doing an addition to that building to make it into a mixed-use building. So it never really occurred to us, nor did it occur to anyone at the ABR, to suggest that we should be completely transforming the building into some other style that it simply isn't. It's a very well-constructed building. It was built for the state in 1964. It is concrete and steel, is not a wood-framed building. This is not a building that you can just go in and chop off and lower walls and start putting roofs on it. You know, if that was the desire of our client, we certainly could do that, not to mention a much tremendous expense. It would be a lot more expensive than what we're proposing, and it would be a complete turnabout of a building, which he was really not interested in doing. So that's what our charge was. I can talk about just the issue of this easement. I don't know if we can get this focus any better, but the easement, there was some question that came up in an early letter. We made the unfortunate mistake on the very first submittal. This is... We have a driveway that comes in here. It's a 20-foot easement. This entire parking area is shared. I mean, it's actually the parking area for the building, the state building, but we have access across this. Cars currently come in and out of this driveway, and when they're parking here, they turn and exit through the balance of the parking lot and go out. We unfortunately showed this arrow making a right turn coming out of the garage, which was a mistake on our part. You really don't have to turn right. If someone were to turn right, I suppose they could go out through the rest of the parking lot. But we have a 20-foot easement that allows enough ingress and egress, both coming and going. So we showed the arrows as being in both directions and in both directions using that easement. So that's what the concern was. And once we pointed that out to the owner of the adjacent property, they seem to be fine with that. So we've seen this before. This is the area where we're constructing the new elevator and vertical circulation for ADA access to the existing building. We still will have an additional lobby here. It's actually giving the owner the opportunity to have a multi-tenant building where they could each have separate entrances. And we're even going to investigate, when we get into it, the possibility that the interior might be connected with some sort of a corridor that would separate the building into multiple tenants. Just to be clear, when we receive the parking modification, this building has a restriction that it can only be used for office, even though it's a commercial building. That's part of that process. So couldn't be a restaurant, couldn't be anything other than professional office. The other thing about this that really works with the site, as I spoke about earlier, is that the lower garage takes access from down here on the lower part of the site, the upper garage off of Olive. So it becomes a very highly efficient parking structure without any wasted square footage, without any wasted area for ramps, which works very well for us and our ambition to have this project lead Silver Certified. The other thing is the setbacks. Caught up here. So this is a commercial zone, doesn't require any setbacks. But we chose to set the building back 14 feet along the front here. And as was talked about, we have this Morton Bay Fig tree. We all know what those are going to eventually look like. But we... The good news is, because this parking area was already excavated before that tree was planted, the roots are already pretty much compatible with the big retaining wall that's already in there. So we have a report from an arborist. They've looked at it. And our proposal, they're very satisfactory that this tree will survive. Those trees are very hard to get rid of anyway, but it's very fortunate that the tree was planted at the correct time. And of these palms, Phil will be talking a little bit more about the landscape, but we're relocating and using a lot of those palm trees within the site, but I'm going to let Phil talk about that when he comes up. So as was mentioned earlier, it is 19 apartments of studio and one-bedrooms. They average 983 square feet. These are not big condos. These are not for sale. We're not asking for a map on this. It's not going to be condominiumized at any... Could be, but it's going to be very difficult as time goes by. It's not a condominium project. It's apartments for rent, and it's in a great location for people walking distance to work. I think it's an ideal workforce housing location. The other thing about this, that really works with the site, as I spoke about earlier, is that the lower garage takes access from, from down here on the lower part of the site, the upper garage off of Olive. So it becomes a very highly efficient parking structure without any wasted square footage, without any wasted area for ramps, which works very well for us and our, our ambition to have this project lead Silver Certified. The other thing is the setbacks caught up here. So this is a commercial zone, doesn't require any setbacks. But we chose to set the building back 14 feet along the front here. And as was talked about, we have this Morton Bay fig tree. We all know what those are going to eventually look like. But we, the good news is, because this, this parking area was already excavated before that tree was planted, the roots are already pretty much compatible with the big retaining wall that's already in there. So we have a, we have a report from an arborist. They've looked at it, and our proposal, they're very, very satisfactory that this tree will survive. Those trees are very hard to get rid of anyway, but it's very fortunate that the tree was planted at the correct time. And of these palms, Phil will be talking a little bit more about the landscape, but we're relocating and using a lot of those palm trees within the site, but I'm going to let Phil talk about that when he comes up. So as was mentioned earlier, it is 19 apartments of studio and one-bedrooms. They average 983 square feet. These are not big condos. These are not for sale. We're not asking for a, a map on this. It's not going to be condominiumized at any, you know, could be, but it's going to be very difficult as time goes by. It's not, it's not a condominium project. It's apartments for rent. And it's in a great location for people walking distance to work. I think it's an ideal workforce housing location. And as was stated, there's 66 parking spaces total, so we have 59 parking places, plus the existing seven tuck-under parking under the existing building. Try the next one. Can keep going. So neighborhood compatibility. This is a neighborhood that's dominated by these trees on the street. So we feel one of the first things we did that was a big service was to maintain that very large Morton Bay fig tree. So we've done these elevations. We've shown them with the olive trees in there as it's really going to be seen, but also through the beauty of computers, we can make them transparent, so you can kind of see the building. We've now rendered this building in. Mr. House is, has, existing in terms of all the covered with vines. It is a brick building, as are two of the other buildings. There's a lot of, there's other brick on some of the other buildings adjacent to us. So one of the things, just for the subtlety of this, that we spoke with the ABR about that, I don't want to get into too much detail unless you're interested in it, but the, this, the siding, the cementitious siding that's inside of this cowl here, we're painting a terracotta red, a brick-red color, in order to kind of tie it in with the predominant color of the adjacent building. But it also has little vertical reveals in it, which make it compatible with the concrete panels that are on the existing, existing corner commercial building. So we're basically trying to marry the two styles. The other thing is, one of the things that's predominant about mid-century modern architecture is a predominance of very long, low horizontal lines, punctuated with verticality. So the whole idea of this cowl is to bring in a long horizontal line, which makes it more compatible with the long horizontal building next to it. But at the same time, it gives us the opportunity for vertical relief, so that it's not a building that just goes straight up from the street, even though it's set back 14 feet. Here, for example, this little, this little piece, we're going to be covering with Santa Barbara stone. We have the lowest, some of the low retaining walls that are behind the planters are going to be covered in stone. And so it's a combination of the painted cementitious siding, plaster, and Santa Barbara stone. Here's a view from up Olive Street looking down. I think this one hopefully gives you the, the idea of how this, the height of this adjacent building, if you go to the transparent one, very much in keeping with the height of our building. And there was a question earlier about how much we lowered the project over the course of the ABR. We lowered the height of this cowl, which is really the, the perceived height from the sidewalk, by five feet. And then we lowered the overall building height back here by about three and a half feet over the course of several meetings. Go to the next one. This is the pedestrian view from, from the sidewalk. And once again, you can see the adjacent building and their driveway. So this portion of the, of the building, we actually set back about 30 feet. And we chose to change this from what had been in the earlier designs at the ABR, had been a, one of the units with the loft, so it was a taller volume. And we, we figured that after we moved it back 30 feet, we actually removed that loft from it, made it a smaller unit to give more breathing room for the tree. So you can see, by pushing this way back, it definitely responds. This is actually behind the, the, it's further set back than the existing adjacent building to the north of us. We can just go quickly into some of the revisions to the existing building. So this is the west face. Brutal, even though it has about a four-foot overhang, a lot of sun issues there. Our proposal, we're going to replace all the storefront in there, but we're also going to kind of re-add, add these new brackets that are similar and relate to the vertical columns along Cana Perdido, so that we can bring the sun shading across. And we also are bringing it across to shade the, the windows from the Rape Crisis Center. We are planning on putting, go back. And we are planting trumpet vines, which we think will eventually just completely fill this trellis. And we are also adding them back here that will trail along, and we, it'll probably, we're hoping we're going to get some up on top of this part as well. Trumpet vine is a very, very robust growing vine, does very well here in Santa Barbara. Along this side, it's characterized by a, a tall hedge that's right on the sidewalk, which isn't, we don't think is very attractive. These very tall columns that are full-height columns. So on this side, we're bringing that same idea of the trellis around. As you can see here, it also provides sun shade above for those windows, and then it becomes kind of a green screen and a, a new version of landscape here, which Phil, Phil can talk about. But we're making an effort to really soften that exposure of the building, as well as providing sun shade. On the corner, this is the existing condition. There's a hedge planted here, and that hedge is necessitated adding a wrought iron fence to keep homeless people from going in there and sleeping. So we want to get rid of all that and place some lower landscape in there and open up that entry and make it a much more inviting lobby from the corner. So that's what the next, that's what our scheme does. So you can see, we're lowering that landscape, getting rid of the chain, the wrought iron fence. This element right here, Paul, I think, when Paul Zink, when he was here, had kind of forgotten, we'd talked about at the ABR, that we're going to, we're going to propose to clad that in Santa Barbara sandstone, that element there. Instead of, right now, it was proposed, it's been proposed as plaster, painted a terracotta color, a brick color. But that's one place where we think that that would actually, we like that idea, so this will become a natural stone face as opposed to a painted.
Would that be finished stone or rough stone? Santa Barbara sandstone there?
It would have the rough clef face. It would be a natural clef face, not a smooth face. The other area we talked about is underneath of these windows here, the little, the little wall, the buttress wall underneath the windows is to put that in sandstone as well. So we're trying to add, and we will propose that when we go back to the ABR, to add even more of those kind of Santa Barbara materials, which we think will really kind of make this even more harmonious. The other thing we're doing is adding a parapet above this lobby to kind of give the, the front lobby a little bit more interest, and this, the mechanical screen that I mentioned, you can see just behind that. So all of the rooftop equipment will be screened. The last thing, EPV proximity. What we went ahead and did is added what has been proposed in the new general plan historic resource element. Not required to do that yet, hasn't been, hasn't been enacted. 250-foot radius from any historic structure. So this is not from the center of the dot. We, we took it from the corner of the property line, as, as well it would be, not from just the center of the dot. So these are the 250-foot radiuses of the closest buildings that are, that are near us. And I just would add, besides not, none of this impacting our project, from these historic buildings, you can't see our project site. And I liken this to the Disneyland idea, when you're inside of Disneyland, they've got an ordinance in Anaheim, and you can't have any buildings tall enough that you can see them once you're inside the park. So they're trying to keep, you know, make it nice inside the park. Same thing, I think, is, even though that might not be addressed in the, in your, your general plan resources, you can't sit here and look at this modern building. So I think it's very well separate, separated. And kind of in closing, I would say that I think what we're really about here, to hear about, is that design is subjective, or, or the liking or not liking a certain kind of design is very subjective. You've heard, and there are people here that don't like the style of architecture. There's also people besides ourselves, there's other members of the public, there's plenty of letters in the record of people that actually like this and feel that we've done a good job of embracing the architectural style while still making it compatible to the neighborhood. So I'd really, you know, is, not liking this style of architecture is really not enough to make this project not viable. So I would urge your denial of the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Suing.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I am not here as part of Historic Landmarks Commission.
That was my mistake.
That's okay. Not, not a problem. I am going to be short and succinct, because I know that you all want to go home, and you know that I'm short and succinct. To address Mr. Castleberg's question regarding the palm trees, I believe there were 22 palm trees that are extant. We're going to be relocating all of those on-site. One of the photographs showed, or one of the renderings showed that there are palm trees proposed here as street trees. We have since reconsidered that, and we'll probably go with the designated street tree, which is a canopy tree, Melaleuca, Quakenirvia, the Cajunwood paper park tree. From the get-go, the owner has wanted to protect the existing ficus there, and that was really the program. And I thought, gee, if we have an owner, a developer, a builder that wants to preserve a tree, I'm all on board. So the, the architect, the owner, worked very hard to do that. You can see that. The Arbor, Arbor, excuse me, did get involved very early on, so we, we all knew that it was a viable project. We are adding significant landscape on Olive Street by connecting the existing cutouts for the olives. They're just rectangular cutouts now, approximately five feet by eight feet. We're going to be connecting those, so that we get a continuous landscape strip at the back of the sidewalk, or at the back of the curb along Olive Street. In addition, we're adding a new olive tree in that location. We were also able to get a very small, thin planter at the base of those windows that Mr. Kirkart was speaking about earlier, so that we do get a little bit of landscape in there, because the sidewalk right now comes right up to the vertical plane of the wall. And I think by adding just that little bit of landscape, it gives a better pedestrian experience to people walking up and down Olive Street. The trees that would be on Cana Perdido Street would either be in tree grates or rectangular open planters. We haven't fully investigated that with Public Works. There are underground utilities that we have to deal with, so we're, we're going to be pursuing that. This project, as Mr. Kirkart explained, really takes advantage of the topography. And when you can build a project like that, that takes advantage of the topography, respects the topography, I believe that that project is compatible with the neighborhood. It's not just about what the building looks like, but it's about what the building is doing on the site. If it's destroying the topography or, or grading significantly, then you're not contextual, you're not compatible. You all know that I appreciate historical context. I wouldn't be volunteering the many hours that I do if I didn't appreciate it. I believe that this respects El Pueblo Viejo. You do not have a adverse, negative impact to any of the four closest city landmarks with this project. This is what architecture should be. This is, it's contextual. It fits into its spot. The process really worked as it should. I'm proud of this project. I'm proud of this building. Now, Mr. Lewis, Peter Lewis, the owner, will be addressing.
Thank you. You have six minutes, 10 seconds left.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Given we only got six minutes, I'm going to make mine real short, because I want my council to make a few, few points. I know she sent a letter to you yesterday, but she wanted to elaborate on that. To correct my Mark's comments on the slump stone, actually, my, my idea was to keep the slump stone there on the corner and actually paint it in a sandstone, not necessarily clad it in the san, in the Santa Barbara sandstone. So that has yet to be worked out with myself and my architect. But we, we will be embracing some more neutral tones in there. That was the idea, and actually, we discussed that after the fourth hearing. And the, the building next door, that is listed as the state of California, that's actually privately owned. That's an old sign, I believe. It's owned by, the manager of that's named Deborah Whitson. There is no issues with the easement whatsoever. She currently likes us to exit out her, her property and not on the easement, but I have told her that, you know, we will be processing the application per the easement. If she wants to get, give us further easements, then I'd be happy to accept it. But there is no eas, there is no issues with the easement. The genesis of this project really was my reaction to what's compatible. And I, if many of you know, have built mostly Spanish developments in town. I do, I think I've done pretty good ones, and Brian Cornell has orchestrated some masterful projects for me. I'm currently building a hacienda-style Spanish home myself, so that's my personal taste. When I stood on the site and I looked at these modern buildings that, that look over that hole and, and are bound by it on the west, to me, there was no alternative but to embrace the modernism that existed and to do it right. And I think I picked a, a very good team that executed it, and I'm, I'm quite proud of the product. So I encourage you to deny the, the appeal. Thank you for your time.
There's actually a question for you, and I see Ms. Maria's light on. I'll stop the clock, but, Mr. White, go ahead.
Thank you. The issue or the question about these being rental units as opposed to condominiums, could you elaborate on that? What's your, what's your plan on that? What, what kind of commitment can you make, or, or, or suggestion can you make in that area about retaining them as rental units?
Sure. They're being constructed in a fashion that they are according to a code that would allow it to be condominiumized at a future date. That's not my intention. I presently hold properties. This particular one is held with myself and several investors, so their invest, their, their own exit strategy will dictate probably how I'll manage this property. But this whole property was allowed to be developed, really, because it was an opportunity to buy an existing building relatively cheaply, be able to make modest investments to bring it back to a modern utility commercially, in terms of an office building. But therefore, give me this unbridled land that needed a parking garage and had very low-cost basis. So I'm fortunate enough that my cost basis allows that to stay into a rental pool, and frankly, I hope to own it for some time. But I do have investors. They may have different timelines. So I wouldn't want to, I don't tend to ever condominiumize it during my ownership, but I wouldn't necessarily want to impinge that right on a further future owner. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that to my investors.
Thank you. Maria, did you have a question?
Yes. I do. I have a question for Mr. Lewis, but I think I want to start with one for Ms. Weiss or Mr. Wiley.
Want to wait till they're done with their presentation, or do you, why don't you, go ahead, go ahead and ask it. Go right ahead.
So the appeal is about architecture, but we seem to be talking about parking and other things. So we're not today being asked to decide about size, bulk, and scale and parking. Am I, am I right? Or can you answer that question, please?
Ms. Weiss?
The nature of the ABR approval of the project is the whole physical development of the project, everything that you see physically. The parking, the amount of parking was decided through the parking modification, but again, the design of the parking, the functionality of the parking, all of that part of the project is part of what ABR looks at. It's just the number of parking spaces that was established by the zoning modification. So size, bulk, and scale, architectural style, site planning, circulation, landscaping, all the physical design elements of the project are the ABR's purview. The land use is also fairly well-established through the basic zoning. So the zoning as C2 allows the commercial building, and it allows the residential density that they're proposing, as well as a, an apartment project. They have not processed it as a condominium. Mr. Lewis just said that it could meet the condominium standards. There are a few differences between apartment projects and condominiums in the way of storage and laundry and a few other things that, since they haven't proposed it that way, we haven't reviewed it to see if it meets the condominium standards. But if they wanted to make it a condominium conversion, then it would have to go through whatever ordinance exists at the time. So you're right, that isn't really the, I think it's questions of the council, just to understand the intent of the project, but that is covered by the zoning, and that's not really before the council.
Sorry, Ms. Maria, you had another question, right? Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Carrillo, I would just add that I think this appeal is a little unusual for us, in that it's not coming to you from the Planning Commission. It's not a, an appeal of a discretionary land use approval, like you'd see from, which is what the Planning Commission does. This is what I would call a plain vanilla project. It's proposing a, a number of units. It's proposing land uses, office and residential, that is allowed by the general plan, allowed by the zoning. It's It's right within the code and the charter and the general plan. Now, I don't say that in a, in a positive sense, that's for you to determine, but they're not asking for anything unusual, other than the parking modification, which actually was not appealed. And so it's not really an issue here today. So I call this a plain vanilla design appeal. In other words, it really would not be appropriate, for example, for the city council to say, "We're denying this project." Well, it's not about saying yes or no to the project, it's about the design of the project. And size, bulk, and scale, though, is clearly part of that design. There's no question that that is, size, bulk, and scale is architectural, they are architectural concepts. And if there is some, say, dissatisfaction with the design of this project, that could manifest itself, that could express itself in concerns about the bulk of the project, for example. I hope that helps.
Thank you. It does. And I do have another question, Madam Mayor. Thank you. So, Mr. Lewis, it seems to me that the nugget of the appeal is the architectural design. And you've stated already why you went for a modern look, but, and I think one of your best arguments is that you have property rights, and this is what you want to do with your property, though we are considering everything else, because this is Santa Barbara. So if I could just ask you to expound a little bit on why you did not choose Craftsman Bungalow, which to me seems sort of, it has sharp lines, that maybe you could have done something like that, or why you didn't go for Mediterranean, knowing that you were so close to El Pueblo Viejo?
Yeah, I, to really elaborate on that, as I stood and walked that property on all four sides, looked how it sits relative to its contiguous neighbors, there is nothing but modernism on all sides. I go across the street, we find other examples, and of course, we have a different zone. So in all frankness, I didn't think there was, the ABR would want me to do anything but respond to that compatibility, that I'm in a modern little niche. And it's 60% of that block, and it's all four sides of me, and I got streets on two and three big buildings that are modern on the others. So to me, it was the natural course. It was aesthetically the most compatible solution. The others were possible, but it wasn't logical. And in my experience, it was the way ABR would want me to respond, frankly. I'm not, I've never been appealed in a project, not particularly interested in getting appealed. It's very expensive. It's extremely expensive. And, and it's not one, it's not for the faint of heart. We, most of us that develop in this town know to avoid appeals at all costs.
And then let me ask one last question, because you were saying on that front wall right there, you're not liking the idea of sandstone. As you just said that, I think, you know, some people would like sandstone.
Well, no, I would too. You know, it was more of a cost consideration that Mark took liberty with. And when we were talking, I said, "Sandstone." He thought, "Oh, I'm cladding it in sandstone." I said, "No, a color." I actually think that slumpstone is kind of interesting material, and it can look a lot better than it does right now. So that was my notion. But I'm not, I'm open to other solutions.
That's it from me right now.
Thank you. You still have three minutes and 52 seconds left. If you'd like to have your attorney come up, then great. Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Beth Collins, Brigard, Brownstein Hyatt, representing the applicant. Again, we ask that you uphold the ABR's unanimous approval and follow your staff's recommendation and deny the appeal. My client purchased a dated mid-century modern commercial building with a large unsightly surface parking lot. He's updating that building, improving the design and the finishes, making it more ADA accessible and sustainable, even adding multiple solar arrays. At the same time, the project improves the pedestrian environment on both Olive Street and Cannon Perdido by removing the surface parking lot and adding landscaping and a well-designed parking garage with rental housing above. As detailed in my letter sent to you yesterday, the project conforms to design guidelines and furthers numerous city policies. There are at least 30, if you looked at attachment to the letter, 30 city policies detailed there. The project reflects much of what is the core of Plan Santa Barbara, providing sustainable development, rental housing that is designed to be affordable to the middle class in the downtown area, near transit and jobs, and enhancing the pedestrian-oriented environment on two-street frontages. This is just the type of project we need here in Santa Barbara. Please don't switch the rules. It's not fair to have design guidelines that do not mandate any particular style, but then mandate it at the last minute, especially after an applicant acquires property and spends hundreds of thousands of dollars in reliance on the existing rules, especially when the applicant's modifying an existing modern building outside of the EPV, surrounded by other modern building, especially when this project furthers city policies. Please take this opportunity. Make it clear that you support projects such as this, that Santa Barbara has to be well-designed, but it doesn't have to be homogeneous in design. You can do that by rejecting the appeal, adopting the findings like ABR did, and adopting the finding, I suggest, on the first page of my letter, which again emphasizes all the city policies that this project supports. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a minute 38 left, should you need it after public comment. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Yes, go ahead, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wonder if I could call Mr. Kirkart back up just for a second? I wanted to go, I want to talk about sandstones, if we're not. I wanted to talk about, actually, I'm still a little confused on the finish schedule on the new addition part of the building and the setback. I don't know if you can go back to whatever slide that was, it showed that my concern is just for those who are actually on Olive Street, live across the street from it, or are walking down that sidewalk. In terms of the setbacks, distance, the cowl in, on the Olive Street, actually, and the facade part on the, yeah, you can get there. Right. Okay, so, yeah, and of course, if you look at the landscaping filled in, it's wonderful, but of course, you don't know how long landscaping is going to live, so. I was curious, so I'm standing on the sidewalk, how far, what's the setback to where the edge of that, the cowl itself is? Is it, does it overhang, the setback is laid out in the, in the site plan?
Site plan, let me get the site plan in front of me. So it's about this, this face of the building, the main face of the building here is 14 feet back, and that cowl hangs out two feet beyond the building.
Okay, so be, slightly out.
Yes.
Right, do slight overhang. Then below that is landscaping and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay. And then if you could just real quickly brush over what, what are the materials that we're looking at on the front of that building? Because I know that's been a bone of contention throughout the review process.
So this element here is sandstone.
Thank God.
The siding, the siding that is within this cowl up here is a cementitious metal, or cementitious, meaning cement-type material, like a hardy board, smooth, painted. And it has, it's a board and batten, it actually has battens on it about two feet on center. That's, that's what's going on up here.
It looks kind of like wood, is that?
Like wood. Looks like wood, looks like a board and batten with fairly wide planks. And that was, and the reason that we have those at two feet on center instead of closer is because it mimics the spacing on the reveals, on that existing, the concrete panels on that building are like two feet on center, and so we're mimicking that same kind of rhythm. Okay? The lower part is plaster, painted a kind of dark putty, putty color. So this lower level down here, both around these windows and here where the driveway goes in, is, is plaster. Painted a dark, kind of a putty color, which is a background for the, for the landscape that you see here. And then this piece that's pushed back even further, this is back 30 feet, as we said, from the property line, this whole entire piece is the same material as the, as that brick reddish color that's in the middle of the cowl.
That'll be that big fig tree that's there.
That's where the fig tree, if you turned on the trees, you wouldn't really see it. But yes, that's, that's what the, the cowl itself is also plaster painted kind of a cream color.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to public comment. We'll start with Ernie Watson. Come on up. And you have two minutes at the podium. We'll be followed by Mary Louise Days.
Thank you, members of the council, Madam Mayor. Came with a few printed, boy, I haven't talked for a while. I just had, I'll start by saying, I'm a retired architect, and I've never heard the word "modern" used so loosely. That building is just junk. It's there, really. And it's not, I wouldn't consider it modern. It's just a poor example of architecture. But there's, this may be out of, out of phase, maybe shouldn't be talked about, but this density that this project is going to create, there's an office building with, I don't know, it looks like 50 rooms in it, on the first floor. How many employees are in there? And where are they going to park? And there's 19 dwelling units. Some of those people will have two cars. Now, where are they going to park? And I mentioned stories to your staff, and they came up with no answer to that. So we're missing a lot of things in this project that possibly are necessary for proper use of the land. I don't know what's going wrong with my voice, but, so the major problem I see is this density that's going to be created by this building is going to impact the Street of Olive. I live at the corner of Creo and Olive. Chet Carjola designed my house. It won an award in 1937 for best architecture for a house, small house, in Santa Barbara. Very proud of it. And that's essentially what the neighborhood is. I just want to say one last thing. If there's that many people parking cars and traveling up a very narrow street because of its, well, parking cars, there has to be some kind of a way to widen that Olive Street, because we're losing rearview mirrors on the left sides of cars, oh, one a month from collisions. And it's the narrow street. And also, Olive Street is widened between Cannon Perdido and Dela Guerra during a project that was done by the redevelopment agency about 20 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, we should move forward with Olive on up with this added density, and you have the right to do that with.
Your time is up.
Okay, I'll do it quickly, just one more second.
No, no, your time is up. So thank you, you're over about three minutes.
There's a way to do that with a condition you can levy on this project.
Thank you. Mary Louise Days will be followed by Pam Brandon.
I am Mary Louise Days, a native of Santa Barbara and a historian familiar with architectural history of Santa Barbara. I sent you all a letter on September 9th. In my letter, I pointed out that I do not oppose the proposed uses. However, I strongly urge you to uphold the appeal of Grant Castleberg from the ABR's design approval action. I attended the two most recent meetings at which ABR considered the current project design. Members appear to have ignored their adopted mandates governing their consideration of applications, although I and others implored them to follow the city charter, the municipal code, their own guidelines, and the long tradition of Santa Barbara architectural design. That's what these mandates referred to. Ms. Pearl Chase called it Californian architecture, which could include several gradations. The project design is not compatible with the neighborhood surrounding it, and it does not complement the nearby historic areas. The unattractive existing building is not helped by inappropriate remodeling and additions. Santa Barbara is famed worldwide for its beauty and its special architectural ambiance. Stories continue to be written extolling these features. They don't praise the ordinary. I even came across such a story praising our architectural traditions in a magazine in a foreign airport. The local hotel motel industry can lose revenue if this trend towards so-called "modern styles" continues. Recent ABRs have approved highly contemporary new designs immediately adjacent to the El Pueblo Viejo district boundary, which is a violation of their mandates. Much more compatible designs can be and have been built. However, the non-Santa Barbara architecture is proliferating because designers have observed these precedents and believe they now have a free hand. The state building appeared to have been built in 1958, which preceded the El Pueblo Viejo district, so it doesn't matter what time something was built with relation to El Pueblo Viejo, because it did not come into effect until.
Find out, please.
All right. Each appearance and hearing did have persons expressing opposition or concern. You were given the impression earlier that that did not happen, but it did happen, and you can see that in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Brandon will be followed by Mickey Flax.
I speak to you today from Citizens Planning Association, so I'm going to read a letter from the board. Mayor and council, the Citizens Planning Association, an organization founded in 1960, has been promoting responsible land use planning and protection of Santa Barbara County's heritage and environment for over 50 years. It has endorsed and helped formulate general plans and ordinances for much of that time. The Board of Directors of our association has studied the proposal for an office building remodel plus a new 51-foot-tall apartment building to be added to the existing structure at the northwest corner of East Cannon Perdido and Olive Streets. We urge you to uphold Grant Castleberg's appeal of the ABR's June 11th project design approval. The design is incompatible with the neighborhood in which it is located, as well as with Santa Barbara's architectural tradition. CPA has long been involved in preservation of our neighborhoods and their quality of life. The proposed project is not compatible with the adjacent residential areas, nor is its design compatible with our city's world-famous character. We are encouraged to see that apartments are planned as they are needed. The Architectural Board of Review's guidelines state under project compatibility analysis in the municipal code, quote, "Is the design of the project compatible with the desirable architectural qualities and characteristics which are distinctive of Santa Barbara and of the particular neighborhoods surrounding the project," unquote. We believe that it is not compatible with the neighborhood's desirable architectural qualities. Sincerely, Dave Burnell, President.
Mickey Flax will be followed by Sheila Lodge.
I can't believe this appeal, and it illustrates my concern with the eel-like concept of compatibility. Here is a project that adds to an existing building, and yet it is being challenged on the basis of compatibility. 80% of the site that's outside of the EPV is modern. How much more compatible can you be? I think this compatibility issue can often be used to challenge projects when there is another agenda at stake. There are many architectural styles in this town, and too often, an objection based on style masks other objections. The larger issue is, is the entire town to become part of the EPV? This is only one block from the EPV. If decisions were made based on that, then tomorrow's project would be only one block from a building that was changed, because it was only one block from the EPV. So eventually, the entire town could be only one block from a newly defined EPV. This is a private, personal nimbyism. I don't like it, for whatever reason. I don't like modern style, whatever. It's too tall, it's not Spanish neocolonial enough, it's the wrong color, whatever it is, therefore, we shouldn't build it in Santa Barbara, notwithstanding the fact that the housing that is proposed is precisely the housing we need, at precisely the location we need it, and that the design at precisely the location we need it, and that the design has been approved by your ABR, by a body of professionals which is charged with evaluating design and seeing whether it is appealing and consistent and compatible and all of those what I think are weasely words. In any case, the ABR did approve it. We should honor our history and boost our tourism in the EPV, no question about it. But don't turn all of Santa Barbara into Pueblo land. Thank you.
Sheila Lodge will be followed by Monique Mansfield.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Sheila Lodge. First off, I guess I'd better say, for once again, I'm agreeing with Mickey Flax, housing is exactly what we need, rental housing in particular. But aside from that, this project represents an opportunity to change a most unfortunate building, one of Santa Barbara's most unfortunate buildings, into one that is truly compatible with its neighborhood. The proposed design is an improvement, but it still does not respect its proximity to El Pueblo Viejo. And the guidelines say that this is what is supposed to be done. The city charter says that the ABR's job is to protect and preserve the natural charm and beauty of the area, the historical style, and architectural features associated with and established by its long illustrious and distinguished past. Sadly, the ABR unanimously ignored this section of the charter, and it made findings that cannot in all honesty be made for this project. As was mentioned before, the question is, is the design compatible with the desirable architectural qualities and characteristics that are distinctive of Santa Barbara and the particular neighborhood surrounding the project? Well, the project may be somewhat compatible with the adjoining properties, but what about the 20 other properties that are on that block and across Olive and across Cannon Perdido? They are a mix of many different styles, mostly Spanish and craftsman. That, I submit, is the neighborhood, and the project is not compatible with it. You've seen that there are several very successful remodels of modern buildings into Santa Barbara-style architecture. And I'm not saying that Santa Barbara should all be, like, all be El Pueblo Viejo. Another direction this project could go is 411 East Correo. Mr. Grant had a picture of it, and staff has one as well. If you remember, very modern building, almost cubist, that is on Correo Street in the neighborhood. But it's one that, with its simple forms, reflects back to Santa Barbara architectural styles, roots in rural Andalusian architecture. That is another direction the project could go. As has been said, Santa Barbara's economy is dependent on tourism, retirement income, high-tech industry. Those things can all go anywhere, and they don't want anywhere. They want Santa Barbara. And they want what makes Santa Barbara special, the residents that are here love that and want it too.
You wind up, please. Can you wind up, please? You're at 2:30.
I know you're reluctant to overturn decisions of the ABR or any of your advisory commissions, especially the ABR, since you're not architects. But remember, Pearl Chase wasn't an architect either. So, I, please, hope, I hope you will have the courage to do what is right for Santa Barbara and grant the appeal. Thank you.
Monique Mansfield will be followed by Leon Olson, then William Morrow, and the final speaker will be Don Sharp.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Monique Mansfield, and I live at 1032 Olive Street, and I'm writing to you in support of the project design at 901 Olive Street. I've written letters and spoken at the ABR, the Architectural Board of Review hearings for this project on May 29th and on June 11th, and I've attached copies of those letters. I'm specifically addressing the city council with regard to the appeal of the project design. In fact, the face of the 900 block of Olive Street and the 1,000 block of Olive Street have no examples of Mediterranean design along that side of the block, and you all have seen that presented by both sides, actually. The project is not in the El Pueblo Viejo design district, and regardless of proximity to it, is not subject to its design criteria. My husband and I own a home, live in it, and work from it in this neighborhood. We strongly feel that the high quality of this mid-century modern design will enhance the ambiance of the neighborhood with the preservation and relocation of the mature trees, the ficus in particular, the addition of the landscape planner next to the building to soften the facade, and the overall nature of this lead project. We feel the high quality of this design will only increase property values, and we applaud the property owner for understanding our neighborhood and approving, improving upon it. I strongly urge the council to deny the appeal and uphold the approval from the Architectural Board of Review. And if I have a few minutes, my husband also wrote a brief letter, if I may read it into...
Give 30 seconds, go ahead.
Okay. His name is Mark Mansfield, and he works for the county of Santa Barbara and has for the past 22 years. I live at 1032 Olive Street and have the opportunity to walk to my workplace on East Correo Street. I'm familiar with the diverse architectural styles in this neighborhood and appreciate them for their high design quality, whether they are Spanish colonial, contemporary, or mid-century modern. I support this project for its ability to provide an opportunity for other members of the workforce to afford to live downtown and enjoy the benefits of this great walkable neighborhood and live in a high-quality design project. He supports and recommends you deny the appeal. Thank you.
Leon Olson.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilpersons. My name is Leon Olson. As many of you know, I'm a developer. I have no financial interest in this project. I looked at this site a couple of years ago and thought it was an opportunity, maybe to provide some important rental housing. And I have to admit, I couldn't be creative enough to come up with a plan that Peter and his architects have. I think that it has, it reuses a building. Many people would look at that old building and say, let's take it down and start anew. I think that's important, that we don't do that. So, it was a given, and I think that the design has been built around that building. And I think that that, it, what has, what comes up from those plans is an aspect of the bones of this building, and I think that has integrity. I think that the rental housing that it provides is very, very important. I would like to provide rental housing for this community, and have looked at many ways to do it. It's very difficult to do, and part of the reason that it's so difficult to do is that many people don't want rental housing in their neighborhood, or the size of the rental housing that it takes, that a project like this would take. Although I've been associated with projects that have received public acclaim, one thing that I've learned is that it's not possible to make everybody happy. There's, it's just can't get unanimous about that. And if you ask Peter and his architects to redo this project, and they come back and add cost and delay to it, somebody's going to be here and say they don't like it. And I think this project on its own has been developed with integrity, and it is a project that is important to Santa Barbara, and I urge you to deny the appeal. Thank you.
William Morrow.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I live about a block and a half from this building and walk this, walk by it all the time, or where this building is going to be. And Peter gave a really good discussion of why this building really does fit. I mean, you stand in that spot, and you look at this monstrosity that's on the corner, and then you look at this modern brick ivy-colored building, and you'd say, what could go here? What, a Spanish-style, Mediterranean-style building? It would look terrible there. It would not be compatible at all with the architecture of the area. This building that he's designed, or he's had designed, is lovely. It's, I particularly appreciate turning that monstrosity into really not-too-bad a building now, and the way it fits in. It's, I think, I think it fits very well in this particular block. The buildings are so diverse in style that, that actually, the craftsman on the corner is probably the least compatible of the buildings on that block. And then, as, in closing, I'd also make a comment about Peter. I actually live in one of his developments, Bela Vida, on Rinconada Road. And everything he does has style, and the construction is superb. We've lived there for seven years. It is a beautiful place. I think it's the most beautiful condo development in town. And everything he does, all the fittings, everything is first cabin, so this building will not only be beautiful and fit in lovely and really improve this area, it'll set the standard, actually. It'll also be beautifully built, and I'm sure everyone will be happy with it. Thank you.
Don Sharp will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Don Sharp. I want to begin by saying that I've heard nothing from anybody negative about developing apartments here. It's a good, good project, good site for that, and I certainly agree. And I also add that I attended one ABR meeting and sent a letter in opposition to, at another ABR meeting, and the letter was not read by the chair, for the record, unfortunately. I am specifically concerned about the ABR's lack of adhering to their well-defined goals, two of which, and I quote, "to protect the historic and architectural qualities of Santa Barbara and to promote neighborhood compatibility." In addition, the city charter says, "Is the design of the project compatible with the desirable architectural qualities and characteristics which are distinctive of Santa Barbara and in particular, particularly the neighborhood surrounding the project?" This project, in my opinion, does not conform to those three requirements, and while I don't have, I don't believe every building in Santa Barbara should be Hispanic in design, variety is important, but this building is little more than 200 feet and clearly visible from the El Pueblo Viejo district. Mr. Lewis has developed a block-away, outstanding project with Spanish colonial revival-designed buildings that blend incredibly well into the neighborhood. He could do the same here. Is this architecture justified because it's in addition to a very mediocre building? I don't think so. The corner's structure can be easily transformed into a Santa Barbara asset, as you saw from the examples on the PowerPoint. In closing, I believe the ABR is completely out of touch with the vast majority of our residents who appreciate their harmonious neighborhoods and the fact that visitors to our downtown area don't come here to see and appreciate buildings they left behind in Malibu, Orange County, or Palm Springs. Architects love to design avant-garde structures, but Santa Barbara has too much at stake to allow the gradual watering down of our traditional incompatible architecture. Thank you.
Okay, that closes public comment. Mr. Castleberg, you still have some time available. Do you need to make any final comments?
Yes, thank you. I just want to correct some erroneous statements that were made. One, that my building in particular is out of character with the neighborhood. Most of the buildings in that area are craftsmen's style, and my building is probably the best example of craftsmen's style. And that also, there are no Hispanic buildings in the 900 and 1,000 block of Olive Street. I have photographs of several very nice ones, a three-unit condominium that's fairly new, that's very nice. So, I just wanted to correct these things for the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And the applicant, did you want to add anything? You have a minute 38. No? Okay. So, then, it's to the council. Ms. Murillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I have to agree with Mr. Sharp that I don't think anybody's here... The people who are arguing for the appeal are pure of heart. I don't think it's disguised as a way to argue against the apartment houses. I know Mary Louise Days. I believe that people have this connection to Santa Barbara and its history expressed through the architecture. So, and I admire that, and I respect that. It makes me uncomfortable that a member of the HLC is saying negative things about another design review board, and that was your choice today, Mr. Sharp, because I want to respect your message. And I think you're pure of heart when you come here and you argue for Mr. Castleberg's appeal. And I, it's, I think it's going to take a lot of courage for me to do what's right here because of your passion. And for me, what's right is to deny the appeal based on the fact that this applicant has followed all the rules, and the property is outside of the boundary of El Pueblo Viejo. That's why there's a boundary. And I appreciate staff's work, and I think ABR has followed their guidelines. So, I'll just say that simply. The argument that maybe if we allow the style of this building, it'll, like, this one bad apple will give room for other buildings that aren't Santa Barbara, I think are, I disagree with that because our design review process is so rigorous, and because you all are such good watchdogs on this issue. So, and the other thing that the neighborhood compatibility is issue for me, where I come down on that is that the building is already modern, so it's not like you all are introducing something new in the transitional zone, if that's what you guys are calling it. You're like, like a sphere of influence around El Pueblo Viejo, right? So, what you're arguing is that things near the boundary should be protected. But again, it's outside, and you're not introducing anything new. In fact, you're making it look better, better modern. And I've spent time on Olive Street. Years and years ago, I had a boyfriend, this was before my husband, who lived there, and it, well...
Too much information.
Okay, TMI, sorry, 25, 25 years ago. And we, again, like this fellow, we walked there, and it, to me, it is a transitional zone, right? And, and here's all the little houses, and then when you see what used to be the Social Security Building, that's what I call it, you know you're, it's a visual cue that you're moving into the downtown area. So, there's some modern stuff, and along, you go up Olive Street, there's a church, there's that apartment building that we saw with like the funny star or whatever it is, and, you know, it's not Spanish or Mediterranean in any, by any means. So, there's a diversity of uses and buildings and styles all through there. And so, to me, that helps settle the question of neighborhood compatibility for me. But I would like to close, again, thanking the supporters of the appeal for fighting the good fight. And even though I'm making this decision, I do respect Pearl Chase. And, and, and to me, you challenged me like that, and I just want you to know that I, I love the area that we do protect for Spanish and Mediterranean architecture, and the dances we have, and the food, and the traditions, and, and the blood that runs through my veins. So, actually, that's not the last thing I'm going to say. I wanted to tell the applicant that after the site visit, somebody came out of the building and said they hadn't been notified about changes to the building, even though you have the little yellow sign, big clue. But you, I would just ask you to be better communicators with the people, your, your commercial tenants, because some of them didn't know that you're, that you're planning this project. And if you are building an apartment complex, I hope you have open communication with your residential tenants. I look out for our renters in Santa Barbara, so please be open with your, with your tenants if you're managing that property. So, I will be voting to deny the appeal, Madam Mayor.
Mr. House.
I, these are always, this is always difficulty, appeals are difficult, and I know Mr. Wiley plain vanilla kind of appealed, but it's still tough, right? I mean, it's like, here we are, you know, with friends on both sides and coming and appealing to us with a lot of emotion, a lot of energy, a lot of investment, but also a lot of investment in being guardians for our community, and, and I am grateful for that. a lot of investment in being guardians for our community, and I am grateful for that. Mrs. Lice, thank you very much for coming. I appreciated our, where did she go anyway? Back there. Thank you very much. I appreciated our conversation. I do get what you're communicating. I want to share with anybody who's interested is, you know, since I was on the planning commission, I've just always, I was, you know, as you get around the community, you see areas that you can kind of imagine there's going to be some development there at some point, and it's likely that it'll come around. And this particular kind of hole in that block, literal hole in that block, has been of real interest to me, the brick building that has the, all the vines up on it, and this funny little office building on the corner, there's, something's been begged for there for a great long time. And I've walked the neighborhood, I've ridden my bicycle past it a million times, I drive by and I look at it, and I've always wondered what would be there, those brick buildings that are nearby that, I think they're really very unique in Santa Barbara, but they're a design exception. They're beautiful, they stand out, and so I've just wondered what could be there. Now, when I saw the renderings of the elevations of what's being proposed, for me, it was an aha. It was like, oh, that works. I mean, it works. It's like it connects these two kind of divergent, sort of strange, you know, anomalies in Santa Barbara, but it connects them in a very graceful and amazing manner, and I thought of it, I was just kind of pleased. And yeah, it's really different from what we do in EPV, and it's really different from designs of other things like Cottage Hospital or some of these other big things that have come around, but then when I'm now going back and looking at what's being suggested as a possibility based on the appeal, what might be there? Could it be designed kind of like some of the things Mr. Sharp, you were considering, having us to consider? Or I just, I'm just, I just can't imagine plopping or putting or designing or trying to wedge in a Spanish revival kind of thing in there. I mean, it just doesn't, it seems like it would be the most incompatible thing to put right there. And if you look across the street and down the way, yes, there's the residential neighborhoods in a different zone, and they have such a mix of character. Things Mr. Wenke and some of the others that have designed and built in that neighborhood are distinct and new, and they have a really nice flavor. They're not the same as the craftsmen cottages. There's a new kind of design being called for in that neighborhood. And so to me, this is going to be a real enhancement. I don't agree at all, really, and this becomes very subjective, right? I like what's being proposed. Others won't. So that can't really be the fundamental basis, I don't think, of our decisions. This is one of the issues here. When something comes to us on appeal from ABR, I'm not that level of expert that ABR members are. I'm just not. I look at the process, I look very carefully. Was the process properly followed? Did they actually look at and ask for design considerations that would be consistent with the guidelines that they're given? And to me, it looks like they have. I don't see a breach in the process anywhere along. They fulfilled their job. They're going to be continuing to do their job even after this. So I, and Mr. Sharp, I do disagree strongly. ABR, I believe, did not, is not completely out of touch. I cannot possibly agree with that. I think they do their job really well, just like HLC does. As far as the function of the proposed facility, the idea that they're reusing this building on the corner and enhancing it, and then making something compatible next door which meets our housing goals in a way that nobody else has managed, you know, hardly anybody's able to do, but this is a very unique situation. I'm very glad for that, and I'm, so I'm very grateful that we're getting rentals in there, and that they're being designed even to condo standards so that the people won't be hearing each other through the walls. I mean, this is pretty cool. And then finally, I look at the findings that were made that got us here, and I look at the, even the additional language that was suggested here by the attorney. I agree with it. "In addition to being consistent with design guidelines, the project serves to further numerous important city policies by creating rental housing that is designed to be affordable, located near jobs, the downtown area, and public transportation, improving the city's jobs-housing balance, integrating numerous sustainable design elements, including solar panels, and improving the pedestrian experience along two-street frontages." It should be one of the findings. I believe this is exemplary. Now, it's not in EPV, it's not even directly adjacent to EPV. That's a different game, and people need to make that distinction, or else we should just have HLC review anything within a block or so. I just, you know, it's just like, we need to draw the line at some point. And so lastly, I just want to say, I like the variety of architectural styles in the city of Santa Barbara. I like there's a variety. We don't have a homogeneous approach to architecture in Santa Barbara. If we did, it would be boring, and it would look very much like Mission Viejo-type architecture, and that really bothers me. I do not want to see us do that. We need to protect our historic area that's been designated, and this is not, this is not one of them. It has a unique character. So I will be voting to deny the appeal.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This project is next to EPV. It is in a transitional zone between EPV and the area outside of it, and that's, we have a longstanding policy that, yes, it's not in EPV, it doesn't have to adhere to EPV guidelines, but it has to respect the fact that it is in a transitional area between EPV and the rest of the city. Mr. Baumann pointed out that any hope of a real transition was frustrated by the Old State of California building right there on the line, but buildings are not forever. And when we think about new buildings or redesigns of existing buildings in a transitional area like this, we need to think about the long term. The Old State of California building, I don't, sorry, I don't know the owner, that building could be redesigned next week. So when we're talking about the, what the ABR's responsibilities are in this area, yes, I do think that the ABR has to look at EPV and what goes on when you move from one area to another. Now, this is a commercial zone, and it's true that most of the existing commercial buildings in that zone are vaguely modernist. I'm not exactly sure what style you would say this existing 901 Olive Street is. It's a box, basically. And if we put aside for the moment whether stylistically a modernist approach is the right style or not, what I would like to look at, and I think the ABR was moving in this direction, and I wish they would have gone a little further, is how do you do a building? If you're going to do a building in that style, how do you do it in such a way that it has minimal disturbing impact on that neighborhood? How do you design it with materials that fit in with Santa Barbara? I was very glad to hear Mr. Kirkhart stand up and saying that they were doing sandstone cladding in places, and I think that my approach, had I been sitting on ABR, would have been to delay project design approval until we had a pretty complete agreement on what those exterior materials should be, because I think the, I think we all agree that there are a lot of good things about this project, no question. I think we're all glad to see some apartments in that area, and I think we all agree that that existing parking lot is, in and of itself, an eyesore, and it's good to see a creative solution to what you do with a space like that. Personally, I would uphold the appeal on the grounds that I would like to see, I'm not against the project, I think the basic idea of the project is a good one, but I would like to see, I would have liked to have seen the ABR, and as I said earlier, both Mr. Mosel and Mr. Zink had reservations still about some of the exterior materials, and I think there's an opportunity with this building, with the right, right cladding in places, the right colors, to make something that does, insofar as such a building can blend in, blend in more harmoniously with the neighborhood. So my approach to this would be to uphold the appeal, not because I want to get rid of this project, not because I want to turn it into a mission revival project, but I would like to have some firm assurance of what those exterior materials are so that we know that they do blend in, that they do represent what we want to see in a transitional zone between EPV and the rest of the city. And I think if you have the right materials, even with that style, you can achieve that. What we saw, if you go back and look at the meetings, at the four meetings that the ABR held concerning this project, the original design, in my view, was pretty brutal, pretty stark, and, you know, fortunately, over time, I think it's been improved enormously. I think there's still a little ways further to go, and that's what I would like to see before we give final approval to the project. And so I would vote to uphold the appeal because I believe that the ABR was headed in the right direction. I would like to see them complete that process before we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it's interesting because both sides here share the same goal of a more beautiful city. It's just, how do we get there? One thing I would like to say, I don't think that it's up to us to redo ABR's job because we're not the professionals. I agree with Grant that it's a matter of process, are we doing that right? And I think it has been done right here, although Mr. Castleberg's very persuasive picture of Saks was, to me, really powerful, but remember that that's in an area where it's absolutely vital, and I hope you apply and we apply that same criteria in the future. Here, we're sort of on the shoulder of EPV. I'll confess that this is not my favorite style of architecture, but I don't think that that's what I should be debating here. There are property rights concerned, and we should respect the exercise of those. And if we insisted, as Mr. Sharp sharply did, about prevalence of Spanish style, we wouldn't have a bungalow district, we wouldn't have any of our modern stuff, we wouldn't even have some other things. So the variety is important. What then should be the prevailing standard of any building that we consider? And to me, it's integrity, and I hope that that's, I think that's what the ABR has looked at. And I, I mean, I like the fact that there's rental stuff there, I like the fact that the ABR moves so quickly. Everybody complains how slow our process is. It's about four months where this went zipping along. And finally, I would say that no one ever voted against the project in an ABR meeting, so I'm going to vote to deny the appeal and support the project and hope it comes off as well as it appears to it in these graphics. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I can say that, having lived in that neighborhood for fifteen years or so, still having a house relatively nearby, that it's something, that area is very familiar to me, and I've always felt like I was hitting a, I was getting a shock when I come to the corner of Cannon Perdido Street, down Olive, and hit that building. It's a, it's, it just doesn't meet the standard of Santa Barbara's design, and I'm grateful that we have such a good design team working on this. If I had, I mean, I have to say, I've reviewed a couple of Mr. Lewis's projects, and I just, I do know that, as Mr. Morrow said, that it's first cabin work, and this is a tough era. And so one of the things that I'm mindful of is not, you know, maybe nurturing developers a little more in this era than we do when prices are unlimited and times are hot. However, if I were doing this project, I would start with going the compromised Spanish route. I would, I sort of think about, somebody mentioned, was it the Pepper Tree Hotel or Pepper Tree Motel? There are instances, I think of, for example, there's one on Laguna and Correo, horrible building, that got altered with some relatively cosmetic stucco and tile, tileization. So that's my, would be my preference. That would be definitely my preference. I also, I see that this team has, you know, has attempted, first of all, and the rental housing aspect of it is excellent. It may be that what we're seeing is one of the last, maybe the last of the projects, which I don't like the use of the variable density ordinance to provide oversized studios. It's not in keeping with the spirit of our zoning ordinance. This got out of hand in the nineties and early 2000s, where oversized, few bedrooms, big spaces, which obviously can be used for more than what a studio is imagined to be. So there's some bulk in there that I don't think is in the spirit of our zoning ordinance, and it was interesting to hear that Plan Santa Barbara would envision a lower density on this spot than what is proposed. That's, considering how all the battles that we had about density and all of that, I think it's interesting that that, the, even the leap of faith that my, some of my colleagues took to support Plan Santa Barbara, this project ends up, and I suppose it comes out of the commercial space, that there's just, there's a fair amount of the commercial space, and I see Betty shaking her head, but...
Perhaps I should clarify that for you. The medium-high density would allow the 25 dwelling units per acre or up to 27 dwelling units per acre. It's because the average unit size is 903.
Right.
If the average unit size was about 860 or so, then it would have been equal at 25 dwellings. So it is the size of the units, as you're commenting, I'm just clarifying.
And the bulk would have been less, if there were less commercial space on the property, is my thesis there. But I appreciate that Mr. Lewis is taking, is reusing a building, that this is a gnarly building from another era, that's great, and Mr. Kirkhart spoke to it, and I think that's a, that part, again, let's reuse, especially if it's not termite-ridden and all that, but it really can be just rehabbed and move on for the next half-century of use of that. I like that. So as I say, my preference would be to see, and also that Olive Street elevation, I would like it to be more folksy, I would say. And then, and then turning the corner onto Correo Street, I just, I mean, on Cannon Perdido, I appreciate that that's more of a commercial setting there. I don't want any compatibility with the State of California building. That's just, that's schlock, and making something compatible with schlock doesn't work for me. So I'm being a little bit sort of wobbly here, but I would, I'd prefer it to be traditional, but I certainly appreciate that the developer is reusing and is providing a use in the form of the rental housing that is critical to this city. Finally, the parking solution was very, was really strong, just the fact that there are two, there's access happening off of two streets, very smart, very efficient, and so that part of it, I think is a very good solution.
Mr. Rouse?
I'm not sure what I'm going to do yet.
Yeah, I think we all gathered that, yeah, but that's okay, that's your prerogative. Mr. Rouse?
It's going to be hard to follow that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, that particular parcel has always given me the willies as an employer, that state building holds the State Board of Equalization, the Labor Board, and alcoholic beverage controls. I've never liked it there for any reason at all. You know, once again, we're in a strange position of trying to make something objective out of some really subjective material, which is what, you know, ABR does, and I certainly wish I could be really confident in the process, and I like just thinking we're black and white, and I, with due respect to Mr. Sharp's comments, and make sure process got followed, make sure that we're following the charter, but if I look over at Mr. Wiley and say, does this, or does this not follow the charter, I'm sure he would say, no, that's up to you guys, and that's probably true. Am I right about that, Mr. Wiley? I mean, are we violating any parameters of the charter by, in terms of compatibility of what we say, or is it mostly intent and purpose? of what we say, or is it mostly intent and purpose?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, I think everyone recognizes that these are very subjective determinations, and you're the seven people elected to make these subjective. But I have to say, I heard Mr. Sharp say something, quote something that I believe he said was from the charter, and it is not, it's not in the charter. It's certainly not in the ABR section about the ABR's jurisdiction. I believe he probably was reading from the municipal code with respect to El Pueblo Viejo.
All right, well, very good. Well, I still think, I believe in the spirit of compatibility and what I think it means and what it stands for, and that's, that neighborhood is a real anomaly. You have these bungalows across the street, you have some craftsmen across the street, then you have this very commercial, very retro set of architecture on the other side. And then you have the building, Mr. Lewis is building this there currently, which holds absolutely zero appeal, you know, for me personally, but once again, I'm not an architect, I'm not a designer. And yes, it would be nice to be able to recreate the Mediterranean or Spanish revival on that corner, but if you, if you try just to plop it down in the middle of that, I'm not sure that would be appropriate either. And once again, I don't know, I think this project's probably designed around what it can be, how to maximize its utility for both commercial and residential. And I doubt seriously if you took it down from scratch and pulled it back up again, if the whole project would pencil out. But once again, that's beyond my pay grade, so. My concern has been more for those folks who live on the other side of Olive Street, the people that have those preserved period piece homes, and their feeling for compatibility, and their feeling for having the neighborhood that they have. Now, what they've been staring at across the street for all these years is a different set of circumstances altogether. I was kind of put off by the project initially until we did do the site visit, and I had Mr. Kirkhart go back over the setbacks and the materials so I could kind of get into my comfort zone about what would it feel like to stand on Olive Street, on either side of the street and see what that was. I still think it's a little onerous from the state building looking towards the mountains. That's going to be quite a facade, but nobody seems to really have too much of a concern about that, and certainly the density issues and whatnot are not what we're talking about today. So, I think it's beyond, once again, my skill set to talk about what the design should look like, what would be appropriate there. I certainly respect the historical perspective of Mary Lodge and Mary Lou Days and Mr. Castleberg in terms of what would be the best thing to have, but I think even, and as even Sheila Lodge said, my God, I'm agreeing with Mickey Flax. I mean, the idea of this EPV creep, where does EPV start, where does it end? If we do something that's a block away from EPV and restrict that, then what about what's a block away from that? And so, I think that's a good point. And so, as a developer, as we want these properties, do we want them to stay as they are in perpetuity, or do we want to let them develop within parameters and within tasteful design guidelines and practicality? But if it becomes so onerous that we can't do anything anywhere, do we really stop it up altogether and never have the opportunity for affordable housing or other kinds of utilities within our downtown area? So, I was not prepared to do this today, but I believe I'm going to deny the appeal.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, here's a thought that would get me into this supporting this. What, Ms. Wees, is the residential, the R3 setback on Olive Street? What would that, what would that be?
I believe it's, I believe it's 15 feet for the multi-story buildings. The R3 setback is 10 feet for one-story buildings.
And we're at 14 now?
Right.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So...
So, 15 feet for the one- and two-story portions, and then front yard setbacks get complicated when you get into the third story. But I think this would probably even meet at least the intent of that, that the third story is set quite a bit further back.
Further back. Okay. So, that could, so one of the, one of the elements could be to provide the R3 setback on Olive Street would be, that would, that would help me maintain compatibility with residential use on Olive Street.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. I'll start by saying I'm very happy to see this as a rental property and glad to hear that there's no intent, at least by the current owner, in his control to do a condo conversion. I know that, I was wary of that, looking at the size of the units and how it could just very easily be converted, and that's a right that you have, and there are rules about it. There's no, I believe under the, when we get to Plan Santa Barbara and the new zoning ordinance, if there was a rental overlay, we could actually put in the ordinance. For those who use that extra density, we can take that condo conversion piece away, but that's not happening yet, and that's not what's happening here. But I do appreciate and encourage the rental component of this very much. To me, this boils down to a personal aesthetic preference versus a fairness of, in the public process. And if I really have to weigh those two things, I have to side on fairness in the public process. I don't believe it is fair for any applicant or anyone in the community, frankly, whether you're the developer or not, and you're just reading the rules and the code and how it works, that if we decide that we're going to apply EPV standards to something not in the EPV, even though it's close to it, that doesn't seem to me to be fair. If we want to create more stringent mandates around, I think what Ms. Maria was calling a sphere of influence around the EPV, we could certainly do that and have a public process to do it, but we don't have that right now. And so, for the reasons stated by my colleagues as well, I really find that it's especially very important to make sure that this public process is transparent and fair and not given some last-minute changes due to personal aesthetic preference. And I believe it was also mentioned, it could change, the design could change quite a bit, and there'll still be someone who won't like it. So, there's no way we're going to please anyone. It also, I appreciated seeing the 250-foot kind of, there was a kind of buffer of the historic landmarks in the area, and not one of those historic landmarks touched the property, and that was important. And that's coming from the historic element guidelines, the element that's coming to us soon, that was very persuasive to me as well. And I think in terms of other comments that was meant about the use, the actual materials used and the fine tuning, a lot of that happens during final review anyway. That's where the polishing of the stone, although we're not polishing sandstone, I get that. But, you know, the issue of exactly what materials will be allowed and fine-tuning those things as could, you know, create a more perfect type of situation. And that usually happens, I think, between the initial design review approval and final review and approval. So, for all those reasons, I'm going to vote to deny the appeal and uphold the project. So, with that, if we could have any other comments or a motion? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the appeal and uphold the ABR's review project design approval for the proposed mixed-use project consisting of 19 new apartments, a new parking garage, and alterations to the existing office building.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you. I just, I do want to point out that it actually is in our guidelines and in the municipal code, the concept of a transitional area surrounding a historic district. This isn't something that we just made up. This is something that has been part of our process all along, and it is recognized that when you're adjacent either to a historic landmark or a historic district, that you can and should take into account the guidelines that exist in that district in transitioning from that district into another area.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would ask that the, that ABR look at the, that second building, the new building, the rental building, is not a commercial building, even though it's part of the commercial complex, it's, that's going to be the residential piece of this. And could that be pulled back another, any amount to make it more compatible with the R3 setback? I would ask that that be included in the motion that ABR look at that when they, when it goes back to ABR.
If that's not obligatory but a consideration, I can include that in the motion. It's a move.
Okay. Do we know what the motion, so we're adding?
Yeah, I agree. The secondor agrees with Mr. White, Councilmember White's addition.
Okay. So, it's a consideration of looking at the new building in terms of setbacks? Is that okay? Okay. And any other comment?
May I, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I recognize what Mr. Francisco is saying, that there is consideration given around the edges of the El Pueblo Viejo district, and I think that was done here. And when we look at things on a case-by-case basis, and that's what it is now in a small, built-out town like we are, I feel like the spirit of, the rules have been followed. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to ask about the setback? I thought you might. Go right ahead.
I want to confirm that that's on the Olive Street face only.
Correct.
Olive Street side. Olive Street only, not the current building. We're not asking you to move the current building.
We can have that as a, as a passion with ABR.
Yeah. Okay.
But not the side yard.
It's the front yard setback you were looking at, Mr. White?
Front yard.
Front yard setback only on the Olive Street side, just to be perfectly clear, for consideration at ABR. Okay? All right.
One more question?
Okay. Mr. House, you had a...
Yes, Ms. Wees, real quickly, you said it, but I didn't catch it. What are those setbacks again, please?
So, it's for, it's 10 feet for one- and two-story, but it is 15 feet for three-story buildings.
And it's 14 feet now. It would be an additional foot, is what...
I believe they've said it somewhere around 14 feet. I don't know how many inches or what, but the code would be 15 feet. And we do allow certain overhangs, so you know, they had that question, that issue of the cowl? So, I don't know if the motion means exactly everything...
It was a consideration, I think, if I understand correctly.
A consideration. That would probably be to the main building face. Like, if we were looking at this for code compliance, I think we allow minor encroachments like that architectural feature.
Right. And, of course, this is not a zoning issue at this point because it is part of a commercial mixed-use building. But it's just, the notion is to maximize or increase this tiny bit, the compatibility with the residential nature of Olive Street, basically, along there.
At the discretion of ABR. At the discretion of ABR.
Just to be more complete, the third story, remember I said third-story portions are back further? Well, even though it looks like two stories from Olive Street, again, we know that the Zone Code doesn't apply, but just to give you the proper information, that would be 20 feet back because of the three-story, four-story below. But at a two-story elevation of what you're seeing on State, on Olive, the basic code is 15.
I think you're looking at the viewpoint from Olive Street.
Correct.
Right? In terms of the intent of what you're, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Bye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have any council member committee assignment reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hotchkiss, go ahead.
I got a bunch. I think I'll join Ms. Maria on this one, but there was a special meeting on enforcement difficulties with public inebriation, open container, and et cetera. I'm not going to go into the details here. But it was, they reviewed the neighborhood problems caused by Casa Esperanza in part, not in totem. And one of the things that became apparent, because there was quite a crew of power brokers there, including Mr. Wiley, was that misdemeanors are dropped to infractions now, and they won't be prosecuted. So, ultimately, what this seemed to mean was that we should focus, since we cannot deal with some of the existing problems, we should perhaps focus on trying to reduce, or at least understand why people are here, and reduce that population if as much, as much as possible. I think, let's see what else from this. No, that's all I want to say about that one. Sister Cities always has a pretty active group, and they are, I don't know if you knew this, but they have a map now out in the, in the new terminal that's quite big, it's almost the size of that screen, that shows all the sister cities of which we are, you know, have hands across the ocean with. And they're just in the act of installing that and making it the right size. Then, just one thing, it was not a report of, you know, the traditional report, but the society of, or Association of Retired Secret Service Agents came here every four years. They come to someplace on the West Coast. I hope four more years they come back here. But they were a really interesting group of people. You, I think, can fill in a little bit, but they had some amazing stories. If you ever have a chance to get to talk to one of these guys, and they're not shy about coming forth, it's just amazing. And I had a chance to go to the Reagan Ranch with them, where some of them had served, and the stories they told about being up there. One guy said one time the president was digging a fence hole or something, and the president, he's standing there with a rifle, and the president says, I tell you what, I'll take the rifle and I'll guard you, you dig the fence hole. I think that's all I wanted to say, and maybe you could fill people in on the USS Halsey. Thank you.
I will, but Ms. Maria first.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And yes, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we were at that meeting, it was August 29th, and just to fill out a little bit more about the problem is, the courts are full, the jail is full, and so, there is no punishment, so to speak, for when someone is drunk in public or urinating in public. But I'm suggesting that the issue be forwarded to the newly-formed Central Coast Collaboration Ending Homelessness, which is that new consolidated group. And I'm hoping, I'm asking my colleagues right now, I hope to be on the policy council of that. It has some electeds on it that we get to send there. And I have time and passion to help work on that committee. And that ties in with one of my other reports. I was at the Housing Authority Commission, and we heard a report about the consolidation of that group. I was at the youth council meeting last night. It's got some new young blood on it and very exciting. To us, September maybe doesn't mean anything, but it's like, it's like a new year for them back to school. So, we had, we had like a back-to-school spirit on the youth council last night, and they have voted to co-host with the League of Women Voters a candidates forum for the Santa Barbara School Board. And they give tough questions. Those of us who have been through the youth council candidate forum, they really put you through the wringer. So, they're going to give the school board heck. And I was also at the MTD Board meeting, and I think the biggest announcement out of that is that the board has voted to extend the deadline for the vacancy on their board. It's an at-large public position, and they're looking for somebody with finance experience. I would love somebody who's a bus rider, so maybe somebody who rides the bus and understands finance can apply. And so, they've extended the deadline for the, till the end of the month. That's a really important agency, and so, again, there's a spot on that board for anyone interested to apply. That's it.
Thank you. And that position is voted on by the other members of the MTD Board, not by us. The, I'll just follow up from Mr. Hotchkiss on the, it's the, it's the former, it's a very long name, but it's the former Secret Services Agents. And a couple of things, I was able to say hello to the group at their dinner and asked how many were there, were here when Queen Elizabeth visited Santa Barbara to visit President Reagan, and about four people raised their hand. So, just the thought of the history of the room and, you know, dealing with the Reagan Ranch and who were there. And then, the Secret Service agent who was in Dallas during the assassination of President Kennedy has a book out, did a big presentation. He's the one who, if you remember the tapes, crawled on the back of the car as the shooting was happening, wrote a book, gave a full presentation about what happened that day and beyond. It's quite touching, and so, and these people, Mr. Hotchkiss was saying they don't, they're very forward now, I think, of telling their stories, but obviously, when they're in service, they don't. And so, for this particular individual to, you know, Service Member Hill, to disclose what happened to him and his personal feelings about it was quite moving. And then, finally, the main speaker that night was the director of the... And then finally, the main speaker that night was the director of the, the current director of the United States Secret Service Agency. So it was really interesting. And at the same time, we felt very safe in Santa Barbara because the USS Halsey was here in the channel, and I want to thank Mr. Rouse also for participating at the event at the Yacht Club. I could not attend that, but I did, I was able to meet the captain and some of the crew and go onboard and have a tour, so that was very nice. And kudos to the Navy League for all the work that they did in making our servicemen and women feel very comfortable, and to the community who I know really appreciated their visit. I couldn't make that event before because last week I was at the League of California Cities Annual Conference in San Diego, and at that conference, went to a number of work sessions. One excellent one, well, one depressing one on post-redevelopment agencies, what's next, but an excellent one about the pension reform bills that were passed through the legislature, it's on the governor's desk, what the meaning of them is. There's the actuary, the person from CalPERS who has to interpret and implement these rules once they become law was there speaking, and he even said, "As I read this right now, I can't tell you what this means." So if he doesn't know, you know, when, there's still some analysis to be done, and I'm sure, I know the League and others will give us good reports about that. But that was an excellent presentation, and then there was also one about a lot of other financing, municipal financing issues, so that was good to attend. And then finally, you mentioned Sister Cities. I want to commend the Sister City Board for their 9/11 Concert for Peace that happened on Sunday. There were about 150 or so participants and three different musical performances, very touching and appropriate, given actually today's anniversary of September 11th, 2001. With that, I do want to commend our first responders, who I know at the fire stations this morning were, did a ceremony very early this morning. So I was not there, but I was there in spirit. And that's it for me. Anyone else? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended half of the Water Commission meeting yesterday, and I can report on two items there. We heard a repeat this morning at the Sustainability Committee on the update on the recommissioning of the hydroelectric plant, which is proceeding at a, a snail would have beaten the hydro plant's progress by a long shot, but it is making progress, and we have a very, our former water agency manager handling, managing the project and just keeping after it, and our mayor lobbying feverishly in Washington, DC, and we are making progress in that area. Maybe during a four-year term on this council, we, I might see it actually back, at least eligible to be running, but, so that project's moving along. And also, some $50 million in repairs, upgrades to the sewage treatment plant were discussed yesterday. It's just, it's really daunting what a range of activities are going on there, primarily biggest costs being associated with sludge management, very exciting topic. Chris Toth really does get excited about that, though, so that's kind of cool. And then this morning, we had the Sustainability Committee met, heard about the hydro plant as well as the county's green business program and its certification of green businesses, as well as the, and then we also heard an update on city green projects, many of which are wrapping up, and as I understand it from our mayor, there's a report, we've got enough wrapped up that now, next year conceivably, we could have a report wrapping up a whole host of wide range of green projects.
We have two closed sessions to read.
Item 30, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, and item 31, conference with labor negotiator.
Okay, we won't have anything to report out, so we will adjourn from there. Thank you very much. See you next week.